That's right, Russ. I do that every.
I have noticed.
What's that? Nope, it's nine thirty. Ready? Ray Bill?
Knew Arlene was feeling too bad to make it.
Okay.
Okay, good morning, everybody. I'm gonna call to order the regular board meeting for February 6, 2023 at nine thirty one here in Mark's Hall. Kathy, would you give us the invocation and pledge allegiance, please, if I can get out of my chair?
Dear Lord, we humbly ask for your guidance today. Help us to patiently listen to each other and to the residents we serve. Guide our thoughts and our words as we carry out the business of our community. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure, as soon as I get some glasses on. Mary Chandler.
Here.
Lori Dalton here. Kathy Gregory.
Here.
Todd Lombardi.
Brother.
Russell McAllister.
Here.
Louis Nichols.
Here.
Sandra Semenich.
Here.
Rodney Smith.
There.
Dwayne Trotter.
Here. Okay, like to open up the resident comments, please? Right there at the bottom.
Morning. My name is Jeff Sanborn. I own and reside at one seven zero four Minnesota Avenue. I'm a member of the hobby club and we received notice a couple of months ago that because we had outside vendors, they were going to be charged seventy five dollars apiece, which is a lot of money for some of those vendors. Some of them don't even take in seventy five dollars. So that was a question about where does that seventy five dollars go? Where does it show up on the budget? And also that prompted me to think, okay, if they have to, they're outside vendors. What about the outside vendors that come to the health fair? There's a lot of vendors that show up there. They're selling things, obviously, either services or themselves. So I'm wondering where where all that money goes? What, where is it on the budget? Where is it on the spreadsheet that shows where that money goes? So those are my questions and hopefully I didn't stir up too much of a pot, but okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lenora Neal, sixty six nineteen California Street. I want to thank you all for the hard work you've been doing. I know you've had a lot of really tough decisions to make and I really do appreciate it. My question today is now that COVID is pretty much done and I was wondering if we're ever going to be able to go back into the office to speak to the ladies or to take care of business. It seems so impersonal that window. I understand. I know you're going to talk about some later hours. I understand having the office closed at that time, but now that we have a manager, we're going to have someone and another person in the office and to take care of business and stuff. I'm wondering if it isn't time to let us go back in and be a little more friendly. It just seems so cold standing outside the plastic and and you can stand there for a while and they may not notice you and so you have to kind of, hey, you know, I'm out here. It'd be nice if we just go back into the office and if you have your reasons, I understand, security or something like that, but it just, it just seems impersonal.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ruth Coppins. I reside at sixty eight twenty three Massachusetts. I want to tell you, I am not the official voice of the TE committee that we are from the fire hall. I wanted to make a couple three points here.
It's a quick three minutes.
Help, Russell, help.
Okay, I'll continue. Can we all agree that the former TE Fire Hall now belongs to trailer estates? Okay. It's your property. So I would guess I would ask, why can we not have an AED on site and be trained in that? As we have like two hundred people roughly every Thursday and Saturday plus ten or twenty when we do our work day on Tuesday? We badly need to update the first aid boxes there, three of them. I went to use Band-Aids the other day for somebody that had gotten cut and the Band-Aids wouldn't even, everything's outdated in them. They're really bad shape. And the other thing I would ask, you have regularly scheduled people that clean your offices and the restrooms and stuff? Can we not have those cleaned over there too, since that is your building? We do have people that come in. We use them as we work there, but we have other people that come in. We can't say no. You cannot, because it's a public building. Right? Is that correct? I don't know. You know? And the other thing is, as I was going back through meeting minutes previously, the beautification committee that you had did receive like the thirty dollars from the brick? Are we receiving that now too? That was the overage from what they were charged for someone was charged for the brick? I guess that's another question I have. So that about sums it up for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Pat Prosser, sixty eight nineteen American Way. I've come to ask about the marine contract again. I didn't hear anything from Todd. And I would like to still know what the amount of the contract was, the completion date, and if there's a penalty clause, if it's not completed on that date. And I was wondering if you've given any consideration to a different attorney? And I wish you guys would be a little bit more transparent with the people in the park. Thank you.
Okay, do I have any other resident comments? Do I have anybody on Zoom? Do I have any other resident comments? Hearing none, I'm going to close resident comments. I'd like to have the responses from the trustees regarding the questions. Jeff, are you still here? Apparently he asked the question left. The seventy five dollars is a fee that is charged to the outside vendors. The health fair, I think we do collect the seventy five dollars. We don't. How come?
We never have.
Yeah. Good. I was always under the assumption and
They've never, I've never paid. Maybe they pay Angie who who is over.
I thought we discussed that once already.
The vendors pay the person who coordinates it, but we don't charge the person who coordinates it a dime to use our facility, which has always been something that I've mentioned before, we should be looking into.
That might not be a fact. Can we make this interactive and ask Lenora back up to the, because she was a former chairman and I believe she may have some information that will help us with this historical.
Yes. If I have no objection from the board, do you want to make this an interactive? Hearing none?
Thank you.
I don't know if it's still being done, but at one time we charged the person who runs the event two hundred dollars because we said she was bringing all, she was making money off of these people that were coming to her event. They were paying her. And at one time, this was when Margot Kushman was even on the board and she said, that's wrong. They should be paying too. It was after she got off. She said they should pay too because she's making money. Why isn't she paying us for the use of the room? Because basically she was renting the room from us. So at one time, she was charged two hundred dollars. I don't know when it stopped or if it stopped, but at one time they were paying.
Great. Sandy, would you follow up on that, then bring that to the next board? Yes, sir.
As president of the hobby club, may I comment?
Sure.
Okay. And and being a vendor that has done craft shows, most of them vendors have to have liability insurance. Or they don't, or they have to sign a waiver that relieves you of any liability issues. Is the seventy five dollars for the liability insurance or is it the fee just to use the hall?
He just used the
And then they have to pay, we charge them twenty dollars per table over and above that seventy five dollar.
Great.
But the seventy five dollars comes directly to the park. As that.
And how does that show up on the books? Because that was Jeff's, Jeff's entire question is.
We checked with the vendor that does the health fair and she told our secretary that she charges each of those vendors at least a hundred dollars each. And she doesn't pay us anything. So I think we really need to seriously look at that.
Who's responsible for collecting the seventy five dollars per vendor and remitting it to the office? Because I've never seen a deposit come in.
Well, it's never been collected and it came up after the December craft show when when I brought it, mentioned that we'd had a good one and Lori and Dwayne mentioned the seventy five dollars. We have not had any vendors come in outside because they will not pay the seventy five dollars to be a vendor because normally their crafts are, I mean, they get a lot of jewelry, a lot of the little knitted stuff and everything, and they don't make that much money. So they're having to pay around a hundred, a minimum of a hundred dollars to do that and they're not going to do it. Most of the craft shows charge forty, forty five dollars for a ten by ten space. So I think we, like with the the health fair and that, we really seriously need to take a look at charging that organizer a fee to participate.
Okay, let me do this way. Let me put that on the agenda for the next board meeting and I will workshop, I'm sorry, workshop and then I will have Sandy follow up on it and see if I can get some clarification. Okay. The second one we had was Lenora on the closing of the window. I personally do not want to reopen the office. I think that's been a great security for both staff as well as whatever the new machines and stuff that we have in there for that. So I personally do not want to open up the office. Russ, the board, con.
I agree. Agree. The one time the door didn't lock and people walked in, I was like, wow, it made me very uncomfortable. So I like the security that we have right now.
And if you open up another hole in there for a door, then they'd be walking right in an extra door. Sorry, Lenora.
Okay, Ruth, you're asking about the fire department. It's a good idea that we do put the AEDs down there.
I'll look into that. First aid kits have already been ordered and should be here. I'll have to check and see if those are in, but I did order those last week. As a matter of fact, I just started talking to Bill about the cleaning down there. I moved my office down there now and Bill's office getting moved down there. So yeah, we will look into that also.
And the proceeds from the brick sales are come right here. You're going to order them through the office. The park is going to get the proceeds from the brick sales.
Correct.
Comes, grows right to us.
Correct.
You.
So you won't have to handle that.
Okay, and the last one we had, there was Pat. You had asked previously about the Marina contract. I'm just going to jump in there. It was, go ahead.
Well, I want to apologize because I thought your question had been answered, Pat. So Todd asked me if I had connected with you and I had shared with you the amount of the loan, the term of the loan, the rate of the loan. And I thought that's what you needed. So I apologize. We thought you had gotten what we were supposed to get you back. And so I realize now we we didn't give you everything you asked for. So I am sorry for that. That was a misunderstanding. Okay.
And I apologize. I thought Mary did that.
Yeah, it was some miscommunication, Pat. Sorry.
Well, did you get the contract amount and the percentage?
No.
Anyway, it was one million, three hundred and seventy eight thousand plus some small change and the interest rate was four point one percent.
Four point one one.
And that did not include the attorney fees and we did borrow one point five million dollars.
Right. And there is a delay in getting the, Todd will give an update when he does his trustee update about where the state of the Marina repair is. But we're holding back payments to them. Okay, they they have some payments due that they're not getting because they're not where they need to be in the construction. So we're protecting our interests there. Okay?
January sixth, right?
Yep.
And there is no termination clause in there that was taken out by the advice of our attorney. It should have been a liquidated damages clause in there and it was taken out.
Is that everything? On the transparency of the board members with the
Yeah, that was vague. I don't know what we do about that.
I don't know.
I don't know that anybody complained about me because I do love to talk and I'm willing and I also, besides being liking to talk, I'm do a pretty decent job of listening. I'm not always going to respond to you and I will bring things up as they get impacted. So I think, I think most of us are fairly transparent. We're probably not going to come to you. You need to come to us and and we'll work with you. If there's an issue like you have, we'll do our best to work it out and in the appropriate manner.
Our numbers and our emails are all posted in the bulletin. You're welcome to contact anytime.
And phone numbers.
That's why I said our numbers and our emails.
Other than administrative duties, everything we do is right here. Just no, nothing that doesn't happen in the public, other than the administrative part of our jobs.
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to bring up is the fact that, you know, when we made the charter changes and the changed it from per home to per lot, there was a big uproar. And we talked about it at about fourteen meetings. And if I need to get out, I can, I've got the dates in here and I can rip through every date that we talked about it. So we didn't sneak anything by, but residents would have others believe that we did and we really didn't. You've got to listen to the meetings. You've got to follow through. And I know you're here all the time, Pat, so I know you're doing it. But that's not really true with all of the residents. So they've, like Mike used to say, government is a participatory, yeah, I can't even say it. Or so you've got to participate. All the residents have to participate. We're doing the best we can up here. We're hiding nothing.
Okay, I think that pretty well covered all the questions that we were asked. Thank you, board, for responding. I'd like to jump right into the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the January sixteenth, twenty twenty three board meeting?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the January sixteenth, twenty twenty three board meeting workshop?
Don't move.
Second.
Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the minutes as written, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Minutes are approved. And the last one, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January eighteenth, twenty twenty three emergency board meeting?
I'll move.
Second.
Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Minutes are approved. Jump into the report of the treasurer, is there remote? Go ahead.
Okay, as of today, the checking account balance, fifty four thousand, sixty seven dollars and three cents. The district money market account, one million, five hundred and six thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and ninety seven cents. The uncommitted fund basket, two hundred and sixty eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and eighty three cents. And the Seawall Improvement Project balance is five hundred and seventy three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and forty one cents.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead.
Go move.
And I'd like to make a comment before we
Any discussion?
Okay. I just, I, you know, that's a lot of, when I read these balances, I worry about when I say one point five million dollars in our district money market account. I just want to make sure people understand that as of today, eighty five percent of the assessment money we're going to get, we've received. So we have not very much money left to come in and this is what we need to do to run the next eight months of the district. So it sounds like a big number, but we've got just a little bit more coming in and a whole lot going out over the next eight months. So I just don't want anybody to get a false sense of security with that, that balance.
Great. All those in favor approving the treasurer's report as read, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Report is approved. Do we have any bills?
We do not.
No bills. Okay, could I have, while we don't have any staff or trustee comments, can we jump right into the information reports from the trustees? Kathy, you want to start us?
Good morning, everyone. Wow, somebody responded. Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. Since the last meeting, the following things have occurred. The twenty first of January, we had our first Saturday night showtime with the Atlantic City Boys. It was very well intended. That's putting it mildly. An idea about how much things cost. And then in City Boys was three thousand dollars. It was a nineteen minute show. The donations at the door is eight hundred and three dollars. So we've had two showtime events since season started in January. The total paid for both, both acts was three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Total donations equaled one thousand, one hundred and three dollars. The dance scheduled for January twenty eighth with Taylor Taylor had to be canceled due to one of their family emergencies. I thank everybody for helping out with the cancellation. It's just really smart to look at the TE website, which all of you should know how to access now for any changes because things happen and we have no control over it. I'm going to recap the last three months of Saturday night dances for November, December and January. We've paid three thousand dollars in contracts. At the door, we've taken in three thousand, two hundred and fifty seven dollars and fifty cents. Now, those three months of dances were not the big bands that have been booked. So that number will change drastically as we get into this month and of course March. We had our first dance for February last Saturday. DJ Richie Hodge was here. I don't know what happened, but we, at the door, we collected eight hundred and twenty five dollars. The word got out. I have no idea, but we had a hundred and ten guests attending. Like we had to actually put out extra tables. Fifty fifty take for the district was a hundred and ten dollars. Now, looking ahead, we have two big events this week. On Thursday, on February ninth, we have the Sunset Beach Happy Hour Dance at the Beach Pavilion. So five to eight, bring an appetizer or a dessert to share, your own chairs and of course your own drinks. Because of the, how this event is going to happen, there's going to be a change in how the beach area looks beginning probably on Wednesday. So if you're a beach pavilion person, be on the lookout for some changes. The picnic benches will be taken off of the pavilion. That's going to be the dance floor. And we're going to have golf cart parking, thanks to our lovely golf cart parking manager down there, Russ. And so we'll have help with parking your golf carts. If you went to the event in October, you know, we had tents put up for the food. The food is going to be down by the beach area to allow for a lot more seating for people. So the tents will be put up down there instead. We could use a few more pop-up tents. So if you have any you would like to let us use for that night, please let me know. Need about three or four more. I can use a few more volunteers to assist with setup and take down as well because it's going to be a pretty big event. So if you live close to that area, it's going to be kind of a wild night. So I'm just going to warn you, it's going to be a lot of people down there. And if we have a bad weather event, which hopefully we won't, the large hall is on reserve. So we'll have it Thursday night. Just not sure where yet. So keep your fingers crossed for a dry night. This Saturday will be our second Saturday night showtime event. Dave and Daphne will be here. They were here last year. This is a different show from what I've been told. I've heard all the remarks and comments about the reserved seating and how to get the room set up. So you have been heard. The doors will open at six PM and not a moment earlier. There will be no reserved seating. None. So if you want to save a seat when you walk in or a table, your entire party has to be present. There's no exception to that. Wanted to be fair to everybody, but if you arrive at five till seven, Wanted to be fair to everybody. But if you arrive at five till seven, you may not have a seat. So, you know, six to seven, use plenty of time to get your chairs and get your table. We'll have a combination of a few tables and the rest will be just straight seating. We will have snacks available. This is only for trailer estates residents. So please have your IDs. Please be prepared for that. Um, we have a movie night coming on Thursday, February sixteenth. Uh, it'll be posted on seven thirty-two and on fob-related doors like the activity center and the laundromat. And if you go for Saturday night dances, we did have a cancellation on a band. So the band westbound and down will be entertaining on the eighteenth of February. And one more announcement. In March, we have the Trailer Estates Big Band nightclub event. It's on March eighteenth. Um, the big band, Oceans Eleven, will be here entertaining. Uh, tickets will start to be available at the post office on Wednesday, February fifteenth. It is reserved seating only. This is free to all residents. Outsiders will pay ten dollars a ticket, but they are welcome to come. So if, it's gonna be a wonderful event, the place will look very different. So you're gonna be surprised when you walk in that night, and we will be serving light appetizers. So again, um, there'll be more about that as well. Thank you.
Great.
Question, uh, on the Thursday night, uh, people need to make sure if they don't, if they can't walk from the distance on their golf cart parking to make arrangements to have somebody drop you off.
Yep.
And then so that they can walk back or I'm sure, uh, there's plenty of people in the park to be glad to help you out.
And you, you can pull up in your golf cart, you can drop off your food, we'll walk it down to the tents, put your chairs up in the go park. Um, but just be prepared, it's gonna be a, if you were here in October, this is season now. So it's gonna be a bigger event. We want everyone to come, the more the merrier, and the same DJ singer will be here as well. So, thanks, Ron.
Great, thank you. Sandy?
Well, my news is not as exciting as her news, but then we want you to take care of yourselves. So our health fair is scheduled for February sixteenth. There's, uh, lots of advice, free advice and goodies and prizes and why everyone seems to have a, a good time at the health fair. So come on out and be a part of it. Uh, also, I am currently making a list of people that would either drive somebody or go with them and assist them to their appointments. Now, my number is in the book, my, um, email is available. I also have, um, a sheet at the office where you can tell the office of personnel if you would like to add your name to that list. I have, uh, had a couple of people that are in need of that. Some of them have their own, uh, chair, but they need somebody to help them in and out of, of the building. And also, over at the, uh, Discovery Village, on March the eighth, Wednesday, from eight to three-thirty, there's a mobile, uh, called dermatology. And the services include skincare exams, eczema, psoriasis treatments, botox and fillers, mole surgeries and more. And you can go over there, um, they, they recommend that you have an appointment. And their number is nine four one, four four four, zero zero one one. And I will put this also up on, um, seven thirty-two so that you can see, uh, where this is and currently what it's all about. Okay.
Uh, I'm just curious, who's sponsoring that and why are we advertising it? Is that, is that a trailer estates going through Discovery Village or what is it?
No, it's just, it's just to let the people here know that there's something going on over there, that they can be a part of.
Okay, Todd?
All right, I'll start off with the Seawall report. They've, uh, pretty much finished the north wall. They still have the stairs to demo on the north wall yet and do that. And most of the boats have been moved back into the, their own spots on the north wall. The east wall, um, they're done with the decking on it. They are gonna pour the stairs on the northeast corner today and the rest of the wall. And I've already started moving boats back into those spots on, on there. Um, south wall, they're driving panels, um, coming along pretty good. Hopefully start pouring some of the deck on that later this week. They've been struggling to get concrete. Um, we didn't get any concrete, concrete out at all last week because it's a national shortage. So things are, the delays pushing out a little farther and farther every time, it seems like. But overall, it looks pretty good. Um, the maintenance guys have, uh, been real busy down there, working on getting, uh, new water lines put in, new electric. The north wall, and if you've noticed, the, the lights are not, but the, the lights are up on the north wall. Um, I think it all looks pretty good. I hope everybody's happy with it. So, uh, it's, uh, moving along pretty good. Um, one thing that I keep talking about, and I keep talking about, and I keep talking about are the dumpsters. I spent five out of the last seven days last week pretty much on the dumpsters. Stopped at one contractor from throwing, uh, an entire, and I, I'm talking a, a heaping load of trailer, trailer full of, uh, yard waste into our dumpster, because he trimmed like a dozen leaves off of one of our park residents' trees. And, and then the park resident gave him his own fob to go down there and dump in the trailer, in the, in the dumpster. And I'm, I'm sorry, but that is so wrong on all many levels. And, and if you're gonna give your fob out to a contractor, and I catch it, I know I'm gonna keep it. I kept this gentleman's fob. And, uh, it'll, it'll get returned, but that is just ridiculous. When you do that, you're opening up every place in here and access for this contractor that is not a member of this park to come in and take whatever he wants or do whatever he wants. That has to be stopped, and that cannot continue to happen. I just, I can't express it enough. I stopped another gentleman after he threw, oh, I didn't stop him. I caught him after the fact. Here an entire truckload of rubbish from a house that he's repairing into the yard waste. Uh, our guys have to go down there and they have to pull that stuff out and get it in the right one. Another guy dropped a whole bunch of appliances off on the side of the dumpster. I mean, come on, people, this has gotta stop. I'm half tempted to bring it to the board to remove the dumpsters completely. I really don't wanna have to do that because I know people that use them right, but this is just, it's, it's gotta stop. Please do not abuse the dumpsters. Sorry, but that just, it's really starting to get bad. All I got.
Are we finding them? Are we sending them invoices?
The person, we, Russell and myself went and talked to the person that, that we, that gave the fob away. And he just basically had no clue. Um, he seems to be understanding now. So we, we, it was an educational purpose. And I believe the first time like that, it should be a, you know, a talking to, but I'm sorry, but you, these people have to wake up and understand what they're doing whenever they do that. Park security is another thing that's on the agenda that I put on there for today, and, and that's a major, you know, default of park security. I mean, the fob systems were put in for a security reason.
Okay.
When, when you run into, my opinion, and one, when you run into somebody who is putting household remodel garbage in the recycle bin, there's, in my head, there's zero excuse for that. It's an immediate fine period, and they pay for what we have to pay to get it out of that dumpster. No grace.
The problem with this incident was it was already removed out of the dumpster. And I had to go back on the cameras and figure out who it was. It took me like three days to get, to find the guy and, and figure out who it was. And it's, it's just, if I catch it, yeah, we probably will.
But the fines start with the verbal.
So three, I, no, three day, I'm sorry, I disagree with that. Three days later, we find out that, God forbid, Lori Dalton put remodel stuff in the, and you had to pay our staff. I should get a bill for whatever it costs to get that staff out. And if it takes you three days to find me, it takes you three days to find me, but I don't think you should have a, a conversation with me. I should be bright enough to not know, to know not to put anything other than, you know, yard waste and the yard waste, recycling and the recycling, garbage and the garbage. And if, a, and that's, that shouldn't have a warning. That shouldn't need a verbal warning.
This, this gentleman, I, I agree. This gentleman actually drove all the way around the backside and didn't even look at where the signs are and just started throwing in the dumpsters, because they look the same. And I mean, it's just, you know.
I, I agree.
Problem, you had to drive past the signs. Sorry.
Somebody didn't, somebody also didn't like me, uh, turning the dumpster sign around, so they ripped the, the, the no more dumping sign off and threw it away. So I mean, that's, that's, uh, some of the mentality we're dealing with.
And that's why I say some things don't get a verbal warning.
Can we shut off the fob to Fred's Gate?
Yes.
So they can't access the dumpsters anymore?
No, because then you have all the people that's got this.
Just the one who violated, just the one who violated the, and, and put stuff in the dumpsters or put the.
Again, and, and if, if we're going to consider that, then Todd, I would suggest that you go back to the P P and rewrite the P P to include those. So
I, yeah, I've already kinda looked at that.
P Ps that could.
Todd, do we have a, a sign down there or anything that says no contractor dumping and what the fine is if you're caught?
It's not in there, but.
I think that would maybe put a.
It's in the P P. It's not, it's not a sign down.
Yeah, because that, that might be a little more of a scare tactic to the guys that are. It's in the fines. It's a hundred dollars in the. Yeah, but the contractor's not gonna look at the fines and how many residents are gonna look at the fines until they get caught and have to get notified of a fine.
A lot of it is educating the residents because, uh, like, you know, as soon as I talked to this gentleman, he didn't even realize what he had done. And then he's been, you know, not, not only that, but he, he's gotten a dumpster sense. He's, and he's doing it the right way. I explained to him the fact that the dumpsters are for small remodeling projects. When you have a complete roof missing and you're dumping all that in there, I mean, he, he would have filled that dumpster up with his project. So after he was explained to that, and then he also had a trailer parked out in front of his house that wasn't supposed to be there. And after he was e- explained to him, then everything was fine. He, he did everything proper and all good to go.
Plus he didn't have an art committee permit.
Plus he didn't have an art committee permit is another thing. So it's, it's educating the residents and, and I'm sorry that we have to educate them that it's all out there for them. I wish they would, uh, take a little more incentive and, and read some of our, uh, charter and rules and regs and policies and procedures.
Todd, you know, one other thing. The, it isn't just a construction thing. The dumpster's not for daily garbage. We have curbside pickup for that. And I was there one day, the, the bin was overfilled, and a guy was getting ready to throw his household bag of garbage up there. I'm like, you gotta be kidding me. And he says, well, it's just one bag. I'm like, yeah, but if two hundred people do it, it's half a dumpster. And then he says, well, you wanna take it to your house? I'm like, sure, give it to me. I'll take it.
I got cussed out by a gentleman a couple of weeks ago like that. And then when I left, he took it back with him, but when he left, I went around to check my mail. Guess where his bags were sitting? Right out there by the mailbox. Uh, I mean, it's just, I'm sorry, but that's just uncalled for and
disrespect.
Very disrespectful to the park.
Well, Todd, thank you for the report. Yeah, I'm sure this discussion can go on for a day.
Oh, it could, yeah.
But if we're going to continue this, I would almost like to bring this up as a workshop for the next meeting on just what plans we wanna take.
That's good. I, I will do that. I'll add dumpsters to the workshop next.
Okay, Louis?
Um, I have started my assessment of the telecommunication boxes, primarily in the swales, and I did a, a fairly small sample to start with. My intent was to do the whole park and then contact Verizon, but I think I'm gonna change that because so far, forty percent of the Verizon in-ground, uh, fiber optic boxes that I don't even know are active are damaged. You know, the boxes are broke, the lids are broke. So I'm gonna get a few more, and then I'm gonna contact Verizon to get them started while I continue to survey the rest of the park. But it's a, it's ridiculous. And I don't, uh, the first thing I need to know is I wanna know if these boxes are active. I'd really like to see if we could get them removed or filled in. And, uh, but anyway, it's, it takes, it took a little bit to figure out how to collate them with pictures of them and everything, but got the methodology figured out, and I'm underway with that. And then I also have, um, be issuing an invoice for a fine this week for a underaged, non-registered renter. And there are more cases like that that I'll be beginning that I'm, been made aware of that I'll be pursuing this week.
Great, thank you. Rod?
Okay, um, coffee break, uh, in January, we had fifty paid people, fifty didn't show up. Uh, so I mean, that was, that was good. Um, February eighteenth is our big coffee break, which is where we have the Southeast Guide Dogs auction, where the, the proceeds go to that. Um, you do not have to buy a ticket to come to the auction. But if you want one of those great apple fritters, you need to pay the three dollars, and the sales will start this Wednesday and run through next Thursday. Um, this will be a big auction. The auction will start roughly around nine fifteen. I, I talked to the men's, uh, Bible study, and they have a lot of, uh, donations to give there, a lot of paintings. There'll be a lot of woodworking type stuff of, so those of you that haven't been to the auction, it's a great time to really help out a worthwhile cause. And, and I understand there also will be hopefully a guide dog there that you'll be able to see and hear somebody in, in action there. Um, I've also put out a request, uh, like Kathy did last year for help with, uh, funds to do the summer activities, the picnics, the ice cream social, those types of things. And I've got some responses and I've done some follow-up and, uh, clubs will be meeting on that. So anything that any of the clubs that'd be willing to donate to that would be, uh, would be fantastic. Um, I've started looking at the summer activities. Um, looking at possibly doing a couple of showtimes. We'll be doing the movies, uh, every two weeks. Uh, planning on having the dances once a month. Um, it's a bit challenging because from, from what I hear from Kathy, uh, there's only about fifty people that come to the dances uh, in the summer. Um, probably what? Seventy-five percent of those are probably outsiders, Kathy. So our money that we've got coming in from that, and, and the band, about the cheapest band is, is four hundred dollars. And then they go up from there, from, from the bands that Kathy's had this year, uh, up to a thousand dollars. And of course, I'm not gonna get those thousand-dollar bands for fifty people, because they won't come when you tell them the number of people. Um, so if anybody has any ideas for any summer activities they would like to do, uh, please let me know. My information's on the webpage. Um, there is no potluck in February, the third Tuesday. For some reason, there's, there's this thing called Bat Tuesday that they're doing the big Mardi Gras outing there. So, uh, we'll be back in, uh, March with the, uh, with the potlucks. Uh, the January one was fairly well attended. A little disappointed because of the number of people in the park, but, uh, but hopefully, uh, that will, will happen again. Um, that's pretty much it.
Great, thank you. Russell?
I wanna thank everybody to start off with that, uh, been calling and reporting to the office and to me about their, uh, neighbors and people around them that are subleasing their places out, are renting a room to people. Um, so we're a single-family dwelling, and that's not permitted in the park. So I wanna thank everybody who's actually given me the four or five houses that have people renting in them. I'd also like to thank everybody who's cleaned up and tried to clean up best as possible, especially the ones where code enforcements come in and ask you to clean up your places. Um, we still have a lot of rubbish and a lot of things laying around that people could pick up and remove and fill our dumpsters up with. So if, if anybody had liked to call the county or call Waste Bro, they will pick up. They'll come back and make special pickups, but you're gonna pay for it. So, uh, just to let you know that if you have rubbish and stuff that's piled out in front of your house, you'd like to get that picked up and you're tired of looking at it as much as your neighbor, um, you can do so. Uh, also, I'd like to ask, uh, add something to Kathy's part. There will be no parking on the beach itself. So everybody that drives a golf cart, expect to either be parking down the road, all along the road, or anything like that. And that would sure help me a lot since, since that's been brought up. Um, other than that, I've got about five fines being out that, uh, I've got one that the person's paying daily for, uh, three different fines on the same list, non-registered owner, non-registered renter. And so I can't think of what the other one is. But, uh, right now, those people are neglecting to pay their fine or come in and register their renters. I've had a gentleman come in from the fine schedule and rented his, or wrote up his renter and everything, but his renter didn't have a driver's license, so we're waiting on his birth certificate. And that's been going on for seven years, this, this particular renter. The one that the gentleman's getting fined now. The one that the gentleman's getting fined now, um, that's been nine years. So everybody, I, you know, it's not that hard to come in, fill out paperwork, register your guests, register your renters. It just helps us with security and everything in the park. Thank you.
I noticed one comment from Russell. You know, Russell's made the comment before about the golf carts on Florida Boulevard. I saw two of them this past week and they come out and go, and it's all North Side golf carts. They come out and go on Florida Boulevard, five or six streets and then cut back in. They don't even, they're not even smart enough to go on the sidewalk, which the golf carts will fit on. And of course, that's not legal either, but, uh, there's still people that are, uh, somebody gets picked up, they'll find out real quick.
Don't say it, Dwayne. Okay, Laurie?
You don't, I might. All right, uh, just letting everybody know, we recently revised PP thirty-seven reservation for function form. The new form is available on the website and in the office. All future reservations need to utilize this new form. I'm accepting recurring reservations for May twenty twenty-three through April twenty twenty-four. Remember that I need to have a copy of your bylaws and officers or a PP thirty-nine for less formal groups, along with your PP thirty-seven reservation form. I cannot begin processing the requests. I cannot begin processing these requests immediately. As a result, you may not receive a confirmation reply as quickly as normal. I hope to begin processing them later this week. I will let everyone know when I'm caught up. Thanks for your patience.
Great. Anything else? Mary?
Uh, just have, um, one thing I want to remind everybody, we are accepting credit card payments in the office now. There is a three percent fee to use your credit card. Um, we've only had five residents take advantage of it so far, so I'm hoping the word gets out. At some point, we're, I'm going to be asking the board to consider not accepting cash in the office for anything greater than the fifty dollar application fee. Um, we've got to control the amount of cash that we have on hand and, and I think I want to shut off and have credit cards or checks only at some point now that we've got credit card processing, but that's, that's to come. I really hope people start taking advantage of, of the credit card. I've got several items on the workshop today, so I'll be talking about, um, our revisiting of our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget that we're in, making sure we're got a handle on where we're going to be this year before we start the next year's budget. Um, the spectrum contract, an update on where we are with that. And, um, the, the loan prepayment letter, it's going to be going out to every property owner, giving them the option to prepay their portion of the C-Wall loan and saves themselves a little bit of money on fees. That is in here just for, uh, a review of format and context. So, um, we'll be talking about those in the workshop. Nope, that's it.
Good, good. Well, I think you can all look up here and just see that we still have nine board members. I need to announce that, uh, Mr. Christopher Allen Shoemaker has declined the position of park manager. Uh, he accepted a job, another position, uh, with a scale much higher than what we could have paid. Uh, it's unfortunate. Uh, we will be putting out another advertisement for the, uh, position again. I also would like to announce that, uh, Mrs. Joyce McCormick has, uh, officially submitted her retirement papers, which is going to be effective for May first of twenty twenty-three. I want to thank her very much for the eleven years of dedicated service that she has provided. And we will be putting out a advertisement for that position also. And that's it. Uh, could I have the reports from the standing up any place? Treasure Barn?
He, he, he actually remembered you today, Barb.
Treasure Barn?
Barb Sewell, sixty-six oh eight Dakota Street. Our treasure bound barn account through January was twenty-one thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-five cents. And the past, since then, we've made eighteen hundred thirty-five dollars even. And it gives us a balance of twenty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. And some of our money came from, uh, one of our girls takes our gold in and get, she got a couple hundred dollars for that, so that really helped too. I, I'm having a hard time understanding how we're doing so well when weather is so bad. People have no place to park and we still make wonderful money, so it's, it's all good. And I, and I wanted to take time to thank Todd and his maintenance department to help us because our, our, uh, heart went broke. It got broke and has to have some parts, so Todd's been helping out with that. And Kathy, of course, she's always wonderful. And that's that.
Great. I do want to thank you, your board and all of the volunteers for the, uh, Treasure Barn.
Well, thank you.
Amazing of what you guys have done down there.
Janet Long is having a little party for us at her place tomorrow night after our meetings and stuff, so thank you.
Great.
Wonderful.
Okay, uh, we have no old business and we have no new business that I have on my agenda. Could I have the reports from the clubs and organizations, please? Do I have anybody on Zoom for clubs and organizations?
Yes, you do.
Great.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Dottie Dear Wester, eighteen oh four Ohio Avenue. I just wanted to remind everybody that the Computer Club will meet this coming Wednesday. And at ten o'clock, uh, will be our membership meeting and about ten thirty will be our group training in the Marx Hall.
Anything else? Okay, any other clubs and organizations?
Dwayne, this is Gordon.
Yeah, please.
Uh, I'd like to report on the Veterans Club. Uh, we have color meeting February first. We're continuing with plans for the flag retirement ceremony on March twenty-first. Our next meeting will be March first in the Activity Building at ten AM. So all residents are invited to attend. And for our flag retirement ceremony, we're going to have some, uh, hot dogs and chips and drinks available, starting at six thirty with the flag retirement scheduled approximately at sunset at seven thirty. And we will be selling tickets for this, so we need to have an idea of how much food we need to buy. So we'll start selling tickets on March first by the post office at eleven AM. And we'll also sell them on the eighth and the fifteenth at the post office. So please come and join us and see how we, uh, recognize this service of flags that are no longer serviceable. And that'll again, it'll be at, uh, the pavilion at the beach on March twenty-first. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Just as an additional comment, Gordon's, uh, notes there, that is also the night of the potluck. So if you don't get enough to eat at the potluck, you can come and have some hot dogs and, and, uh, being a Boy Scout that I am, if you have never seen a flag retirement ceremony, it is very, very impressive and very, very honorable. Those, I see Dwayne shaking his head. He knows how that goes with the military. So it's, it's really nice. And we've got a Boy Scout troop that's going to do the retirement ceremony, so that's even more special.
Gordon, how much are the tickets?
Oh, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have mentioned that. They're five dollars apiece.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other reports from the, uh, clubs and organizations? Harry Nunn, I closed the, uh, reports from clubs and organizations and I will adjourn the board meeting at ten twenty-eight. How's that? Okay, uh, called to order the, uh, Board of Trustees Workshop for January sixteen, January sixteenth.
That's bad.
February sixth at ten twenty-eight. Here in Marx Hall. Okay, are there any, uh, items that need to be added to the workshop?
Did you want me piggybacking?
Sorry, what?
You're gonna, you're gonna love this one though, so this one's for you. You want me piggybacking off Mary, um, for the referendum, uh, to do that? To change the, uh, um, the deed.
I'm sorry. Which, which one?
She is actually, which one is that, Mary? Uh, number five.
Number five and his one for number eleven. Kind of can go hand in hand with that rather than do it separately.
So you want to combine number eleven and number five?
Yep.
That'll save us one agenda.
Yeah, it's all, it's all deed restrictions.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I would also like to combine, uh, thirteen and nineteen.
What's nineteen?
I said I have a nineteen.
We don't have a nineteen.
I only have up till fifteen. What I got to.
Same here. Well, I, I have my own special number. I forgot to change it when I typed this. Uh, anyways, the Office System Retirement and the Office Hours. Those two I'd like to combine.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
Okay, no more changes. Let's start off with the first item we have was the thermostats. Todd?
Okay, I've got, uh, attached here two quotes, um, for thermostats. This all stems back to actually quite a while ago, I walked in a large hall and felt like a refrigerator in there. Somebody had set the thermostats to fifty-eight degrees and it had ran for quite a while. And so what, what this will provide is basically locking thermostats, so the maintenance department will have access to them. Um, if you so choose to do this, I'm also going to request that the board come up with a temperature they request that they be set to, and that's where they stay. So I guess I'm open for discussion.
Will they, uh, at my house, I have to manually switch from heat to air. Will these be like a car climate controller? You set them on seventy-two and it's seventy-two whether you need heat or you need air?
There are three settings on them. One setting is heat, one setting is cool, and one setting is auto. The auto, if you set them, let's say we pick temperature of seventy-two degrees.
Right.
You set it to auto, it'll keep it at seventy-two degrees no matter what, whether it's warm, cold or what.
Gotcha. Okay, I like it. And all right, they're, they're also not locking where there are cover that can be busted off like in the past.
These are a digital lock. It is a digital lock and it works off of an app off of the phone. Bill will have it on his phone. Um, I'll probably have it on my phone and it, it'll take a special code to access any of the thermostats to change them. It'll do, it'll do no good to do, you know, go up there and start hitting buttons on them because they will not work.
I like it.
So which, which one are we looking at? The?
Well, there's forty-nine. There's actually a third option, which I haven't, was the third option, which I haven't brought up yet. Um, and basically the one I'm looking at is AC warehouse is lowest quote of forty-nine seventy-five. We have been utilizing, um, our employee Ricky as a, uh, which he's a licensed electrician, but we've been utilizing him to do our work. Um, we can also get this price way down. Um, I don't have an exact price yet because it changes daily off buying the thermostats. But then utilize a couple of days of his time installing them and probably get this down to less than half of the forty-nine seventy-five by installing them ourselves. Um, we'll have to run a little bit of wire and. So long story short, yeah, I mean, we'll be around, you know, probably around half of that price. Um, whenever it gets all said and done, I'd like to get it approved for that just in case we have to go back to them.
So, so the, the T-six and the, uh, Pro nine thousand, what's the difference?
Okay, the difference in those two.
Any more benefit?
That it, no, it doesn't. All it is, the difference between those two, they're essentially the same one, but the Pro nine thousand one looks a little prettier on the wall and has a few more user-friendly features which will not be used. So there's no need in doing it. Um, the T-six is, is a, it's a commercial thermostat and it is, uh, you know, a very good one. Honeywell's a big company. Matter of fact, it's the same one I have in my home.
I was going to say I have the T-nine in my house. I don't know what you have and I love it. I control it with my phone.
Yep. Well, with per, permission of the board, I don't see any reason why we can't proceed with this, uh, to give the, uh, authority to go ahead and then, uh, bring it back for approval.
I still have a question.
Is there Wi-Fi already every place they're going to go?
Yes. And then, um, I guess the next thing I'd like to discuss is what temperature would you like them set at? Because I want to put that right in the motion.
I, I recommend the seventy-two is a happy medium.
I like seventy.
Yeah.
So just going to stay at seventy-two all the time?
Yep. Oh, everyone will stay seventy-two all the time. We can even program these to, um, you know, go down at night or whatever, go up in one, down in the summer or up, up in the summer, down in the winter.
I, I, I really like that and we set on seventy-two and so then we can tell, I'll just pick on cards because I'm a card player. We'll tell our card folks, hey, look, the room's going to be set on seventy-two, so if seventy-two is too cool for you, bring a jacket.
Right.
Because they can add a jacket. They, we don't want them taking their shirts off. So I like the, the, the cooler thought, add a jacket. Sorry.
All right.
No, seventy was a good.
I think it's a good happy medium, um, but I would.
Try it. Try it. I mean, let's try it.
It doesn't mean it can't be adjusted later, but.
Yeah.
I, again, I don't want to be getting called every other day, hey, it's too hot in this room. Let's turn this down or whatever, but.
But you can change it at night too. You can do times of day so we can save even more on our light bill by having it a little warmer at night than it is during the day, but I think we should try just, yeah.
I'll put it on, I'll put it on the board meeting. I'm, I'm going to put it on there for the forty-seven seventy-five, but most likely it'll be about half that price.
Yeah. I would be in favor of running it at seventy-two for two or three months. So you have a baseline of what it costs and before you start changing them at night, so you can really see if it makes any difference.
Good idea.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Good idea.
Okay, I'll bring it up.
Okay, next time we have there was update the rules and regulations, part B, Lori?
Um, yeah, this was just, it start, it started out, um, just what was discussed at our last meeting where, um, where we wanted to take, uh, out the verbiage, um, wish to. It has murf, morphed, murf, it has morphed into a few more things that I think we need to address. The first one being on, uh, page two, which is section five. Um, in our PP thirty-seven A, we tell them, this is room reservation rules, that, um, contacting the maintenance department was with setup needs seven days before the function. Use of sound system projector may be identified at this time. Costs may be incurred if maintenance must come in during your event for technology support. And what I would like to add to that, um, it is scratch out that, uh, equipment arrangement seven days prior to, because it says, um, that I'll. That says arrangements necessary and then, uh, on the reservation form. And then add a paragraph that says fees incurred for emergent technical support will be at a rate of seventy dollars for the call-in and thirty dollars per hour.
It was thirty, thirty-five dollars per hour.
Oh, it's thirty-five, sorry. My bad. I, I scribed it wrong when I was taking notes. Um, so I'd like to add that statement there so that that's in, since we're modifying this, get it all in the works at the same time. And then are we go, are we good with that?
The reason we're wanting to add that is because of the callbacks?
Yes.
Yeah, when we have a call-in, you know, it's an automatic two-hour pay for whoever we call in. That costs us, you know, the, and Mary and I came up with an average cost of what it costs us for maintenance. And I'm trying to establish what it costs us to go mow, what it cost, you know, for this. So basically thirty-five dollars an hour is where we established that's what it costs us to have our maintenance guys here. So whoever gets called in, sometimes it'll be cheaper, sometimes it'll be more, but at the, you know, average cost is thirty-five dollars.
So what I'm guessing is we have owners who are reserving the room that are not completing the reservation forms that identify everything that they need and we have to call people.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes, yes. And that's what, that's what we're trying to solve, and we just had a recent issue that hit the fan. Um, last month, and we're anticipating that that same event may hit the fan tonight. I've asked Bill to go over and above and call and make arrangements. Because when it hit the fan last time, it affected three different events. And we had to call Bill in, and so, and I know that this isn't in the works, well, it can't be in the works for tonight. So we're making the phone call, and I, I can't stress enough, if you have a reservation, check it on the calendar. Make sure that it says what you need, and if it doesn't, let me know and I'll add it. Okay, that's what we're trying to solve is so that we know what's needed and we get it taken care of before the event occurs. If we have to call in staff to take care of an issue, it's gonna be seventy dollars for the call-in and thirty-five dollars an hour. I, and I'd like to get that in the rules and regs while we're here, rather than modifying and then coming back later and modifying again.
We should probably also add something about rekeying the kitchen whenever they lose the key to.
Yes.
Uh, okay, so there's a cost. Well, he, he's right, and, and so, alright, we may get this stuff scribed. And I may bring it back at the next workshop and we'll workshop it one more time, okay? So let, give me a, give me a second to find where would the key?
Current, currently, we're having them sign out papers saying they're gonna rekey the kitchen if they lose it. They do not turn it back in.
Okay.
And that's already been done once, basically.
And, and, and it's got the fee that they're gonna char, that you're gonna charge on it?
That's, fee's gonna change because of um, you know, the amount of keys, but basically it's roughly two hundred and eighty bucks. For rekeying locks for the kitchen. There's two, two locks and like fifteen dollars a key.
Right, so it's, it's two hundred and eighty dollars?
Roughly, I. I don't have that exact figure.
The act, how about the actual cost of? Uh, the actual cost for rekey?
Right.
Okay, and, and then uh. And then I'll make a statement in parentheses that in uh. Early twenty twenty-three, the cost was.
Yeah, to say three hundred.
Was, okay, three hundred, alright, um, alright, I'll make, I'll make that change. There, and then I also have another change that I'd like to propose. And that's going back to the first page, um, section two. Um, item B, it says right now, if property owner wishing to reserve a function room for more than two times for the month event. Must list as public event and allow property owners, renters or guests of either to attend. I had a small group of folks who, prior to yoga. Wanted to use the facility, stop what they were doing and then go to their yoga class. But they wanted to keep the group just them, so they did private reservations. And so each of them did two of a month, which fed into, it, it fit this pigeonhole. But now I'm hearing that there's other groups that start going to start scouring the calendar and trying to find. Moments of time that they can swoop in and reserve twice a month, so I'm getting ready to see this explode bigger than a breadbox. So what I was proposing is um. That on, on uh. On them, on A, adding at the end of the sentence that says no property owner can reserve a function room more than two times per month. Um, adding the statement and only for functions which could not be included with an existing club, group, or organization. And then at the end of B, adding uh. Let's see, why am I adding that? Oh, the have, telling them that they have to fill out the club, group, or organization contact information. Uh, and submit it with the room reservation, put that right in B, at the end of B. So, I'd like to propose that we bake this in. Again, it's gonna come back at the next. Um, the next uh meeting, and what you're gonna get again is you're gonna get the draft, and this time it's gonna say two of, two of twenty, two twenty. And all of the things that we just talked about will be circled and scratched off. So it'll look like it's the first time we're talking about it, even though it'll be the second, but so that you guys can see everything that, the proposed changes. And then we'll go from there. Does that sound like a good plan?
Yep.
Alright.
And it also fits with what we have for the uh pavilion.
What do you mean?
You can only rent or use that twice in a month.
Lori, you're gonna make the change on uh two C, like you said, like you got circled there.
Right, yes.
I have a question on that as to how are we gonna monitor that?
It, it's whoever's responsible for the reservation, it's their, their. Responsibility to monitor it, but we also have responsibilities. Every resident has a responsibility to monitor that. And I'll just use, there's a, a class that ran all last summer that only ever had resident in it, one. And that's a problem.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree, and I, I guess my thoughts would be that maybe the instructor needs to. Give us a form to the office.
They do.
That after every class, they need to say who the, how many were outside the park and how many were inside the park. And if it doesn't match this number, then their next event is canceled, because we're basically giving them free rental.
Right.
To run a business.
Right.
And they're making more money and we're not making anything.
I, I, I agree with you on that completely, and Dwayne had asked for, is this the right time to bring this up?
Well, I'm glad you're going to, because I have the same question, is when we went back and uh started. Looking at uh the rules and regulations, that was all stemming from uh. Sandy, looking at your reviewing the contracts for instructors, the PP conflict of, I'm sorry, thirteen. Conflict duties, the changes in the seasonal recreational activities and the um, some other items, so. Where did that go? Did you follow up with that, Sandy? Uh, to bring that back on what you really wanted to do with the revising of the.
No, I did not.
Instructors contracts and. Whatever else.
I did not.
Cause in doing what, in doing what you asked.
It all.
For, for mine, um, and stuff, and trying to get things figured out, I did ask for signup sheets. And I, I have signup sheets for several groups, and I just looked at the last month. And yoga is not out, outnumbered, art club is not outnumbered, um. Let's see, this is dancing for fitness, is, they were outnumbered once. Which is an anomaly, um, and couples dance was not outnumbered. So they always, but I never got a signup sheet. I have no signup sheets in the office to my record. For any of the aerobics classes, and they run five nights a week, and I did notice on one of the mornings on my way. Riding my broomstick into the office, um, I saw the table out by the fireplace that has a signup sheet. So if they're signing up, but they're not getting, they're not coming to us, we don't know what's going on, but they. Appear to be our problem child.
Okay, can I address that? And, and, and I go to those classes.
I know.
They're pretty much every time, uh especially mornings. During the summer, I was the only resident because the classes are so small. I mean, they are. I mean, during the summertime, I think sometimes I was the only one, period. Um, I think, and I don't know why they're not turning the sheets in, because there's a signup sheet. And I'll be there tonight, so I will mention it to Kathy, who's the, who's the, the person in charge. That, I don't know if she even knows they have to be turned in. I don't know, but I will, I will ask and make sure that it's done. Um, for the nighttime classes, they can't take, they can't make a copy of it because the office is closed. So, so going forward, beginning tonight. What's the process? She bring it in Tuesday and then makes copies of it?
That, that would, that would work, or snap a picture and email it?
Okay.
Do they need it? Does the instructor, does the instructor need the signup sheet?
I think she does it because there, but what I understand, and, and there are people from the outside who pay a monthly fee. And, and they pay a, a fee for that, for those classes, and then trailer estates folks. Sometimes we pay and sometimes we don't. It's just, it's the agreement of the contract, which I've, I haven't seen, so I have no idea. Um, but I can talk to Kathy.
There, there also might be an, an added element to this. One of the reasons that you might have been able to, over the summer, have the class and you be the only attendee.
Right.
Is because it, I believe that it's being videotaped and streamed and charged for the streaming.
You're right, it is.
So, we're basically giving our facilities away for nothing. Um, and I have a real personal problem with that.
And are you getting the, the class roster for the Tuesday night line dancing?
I don't remember. Let me, let me go through.
Because a lot of Valentine's are coming to that class.
Right, I don't think, I don't think I got the line dance either, but let me, let me go through this a little bit slower. And make sure, because I was just flying through it.
Sounds like there should be a complete evaluation of all of them.
That's what we were supposed to be doing today.
Yeah.
It isn't getting done. Um, no, I don't have anything for line dance.
Okay.
Um, so that would be, that would be another one, if they're signing. They should, everybody should be signing up for signing it, especially if they're. This is, this is hard, alright, let me pick on Uker. We don't do a signup sheet at Uker, that who showed up to play Uker, we just, they show up and we play Uker, we're never outnumbered. Um, but if we need to, that just seems like colossal volume of paper unnecessarily. Unnecessary, but on any crusty reservation. Um, I think that, 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 well, I'm not, I don't wanna be quite that broad. Because I don't want signup sheets for Saturday night dances and showtimes. But I, I think that anything, especially if we're paying an instructor, that we should see what we're paying for. We should know what we're getting, um, and these classes that are. Have outside folks outnumbering us. And especially if they're streaming, because now we don't know how many people they're, they're, and they're using our facilities for nothing. Or maybe even be paid to use our facilities for nothing, just dance all seven hairs on my head on end. So, that's just me.
Are we talking about re-cooking the rules instead of just talking to two instructors that are abusing us? I mean.
No, it, it, it's more than just two instructors. We're looking at all the contracts, the whole.
It's all of it.
All, all the PPs, the whole thing for this thing.
And I think that's just, um, because also it's, and I've been asked this, and I go, you know, I go to Jazzers Eyes or whatever you wanna call it. I go to yoga. I go to quite a few of the classes because it's, it's wonderful, but there's different fees for different folks. And I'm, I've gone through all the contracts in there to see what we're doing, because I wanna find out, why am I paying this class? Why am I paying at all? I mean, if we're paying the, are we paying the instructors, then why are, why are residents paying?
Thing.
I, I don't understand.
That's what I spotted in those contracts.
Different amounts, and sometimes we pay and sometimes we don't, depending upon the morning or the nighttime. And like, why is this happening?
At, at one point, years ago, probably pre-many of the board members now. Uh, administration, it was decided that rather than paying a hundred percent of the instructor. That we would only pay fifty percent, and that the other fifty percent would be made up by the residents that actually attended the event. So that's why you're getting residents being charged at all. And the reason that you're getting charged differently is if instructor A for event A. Needs, wants a hundred dollars, we only paid him fifty, they've gotta make up the other fifty from the people who come, and so they set their. Normal who shows up, no guarantee they're gonna show up, but, okay. Um, and so, uh, painting instructor, maybe theirs, a, and I'm just making this up. I don't know these things, the analogy, maybe we're paying them, the instructor, five hundred dollars for the season. And so they're charging those people ten dollars to make up, because we only paid half of that instructor fee. So somewhere there was something that was done, and if you need me to do research, I can and find out when we did it. But we changed it, so we were only paying half of, that's why residents started paying, helping pay for. Events.
But, but again, uh, those contracts are extremely important. And the terms and conditions, it should actually say the park is going to pay X amount of dollars. The instructor is going to charge each one of the residents a item, so. One week you're not paying forty dollars for painting something, and then the next week you're getting charged an additional fee.
That's what I think confuses it so much.
So the whole thing really needs to be taken a look at. So you'll be bringing that back, Sandy. I'd like to have some more information from you on those uh contracts. So we can take a look at the whole, whole picture. Okay, uh, the next item we have then is the first draft of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three bus, uh, budget.
Yep.
So before we get into our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. I thought it was important for us to take a step back and see where we're now projected to end the year we're in, because we've had some things. Um, happening that weren't in the original budget, um, so I wanted to just kind of go over where we are today. Um, so, I wanna, we can just start out, we've got some funds that weren't here. Um, we've got the uh, the C-Wall loan, and um, where the, the kind of interest income we're making on that. And um, the costs of that in our, in our beginning balances, but. If we jump into the income category, which is in the bottom of that first page. Um, I did not anticipate the amount of interest that we were going to be earning on our. District money market and on the C-Wall money while it sat in the account waiting for those installment payments when I set the budget. Um, we had been coming off two years of next to no interest income, the rates were so poor. And they've started to rebound now, so we, with the combination of the two. We're gonna actually make some pretty good interest income this year that wasn't anticipated, so that's very good news. But on the flip side of that, we had put into the budget that we were going to rent the old fire department building, which we then found out we couldn't. And it's now gonna be used for our maintenance, so there was eighteen thousand dollars of income we had put in the budget that we're never going to see. So I had to remove that. Um, there's insurance claim money that we got in for Hurricane Ian. And we got money to do some repairs. We've done a lot of the repairs, but right now. Um, there's about twenty-seven thousand dollars left there. I have put in an assumption of fifteen thousand for the. Uh, fish house, which leaves twenty-seven thousand, um. I, I would like some, we can, we have a couple of different things we can do with that. We can leave it here, it'll go into our general fund. Or I can set it aside in a future payables account. Um, because there was some damage that was caused by Ian, basically the north fence, that we weren't able to get any claim money for. Now that's not even gonna come close to what we need to replace that fence, but we can put it there and um, maybe. Think about sending aside additional money to get that fence repaired from another fund, or we can just leave it there.
There's, there's still other things that we need to repair also that we have not got to yet.
Okay, so you think you're gonna need.
Leave that in a hurricane fund, yeah.
And you think it'll get used?
We'll get to it. The marine has been consuming our time, so.
Okay, then, then although that says twenty-seven thousand, the reality is there probably won't be anything left.
I don't know it'll be that bad, but, but.
Okay.
No, I don't know.
Okay, um, the other big hit that's um, there is um. If we renew the Spectrum contract, which is another agenda item that we'll be getting to. Uh, we're being offered a two hundred dollar per home sign-on bonus for renewing the contract. So ninety days after we put the contract in place, we'll get a check from Spectrum for two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, so. I, there's a couple of different ways we can handle that. We can just throw it in the general fund and we've got that much. A better balance in our reserve, or I would like to suggest that we take that, we divide, it's a five-year contract. We divide it by the five years, twelve months a year, and we pull out roughly forty-five hundred dollars a month. And lower our annual cost for the Spectrum contract for every year of the contract, which will affect the overall. which will affect the overall expenses of that year and, and our assessment for that year. So we'll, we'll kind of filter that in over the term of the loan, of the contract. But that, I mean, those are options, I'm just throwing options out.
I think on a lot of that extra, extra monies that we really, I mean, we're going to have things that are going to come up that we're not going to have funds for. And I think we ought to put it in a reserve for those situations and then address it as we come closer to the end of the year on what that balance is, and see if at that point, if we need general fund money, then we can move it over. So, I mean, that's kind of a, a safety gate for us to, uh...
And that's, you know, I mean, those are options that we have, I just, that's, I wanted to just put it out there to see what people think.
I, I think, I, I think some of that saving should be shared directly with the residents, if it's a per door.
It's a per door sign-on bonus, that was why I was...
Not necessarily all of it, but.
It's going to be, how, however we use it, the residents are going to reap the benefits, whether we lower the spectrum...
Exactly, that's what I was thinking.
Or what we have it set in a, in a special fund to cover. It's all going back to the residents, not like, you know, who, who we get, we're going to get a check this month.
Yep.
Um, it's, it's all going back to the residents, it's just a matter of how.
And, and just like you said, you know, we've got a major issue that we need to deal with the, the back fence, you know? Maybe, maybe that money goes to pay for that back fence.
I mean, yeah, absolutely.
And, and, and I hear if we reduce the Spectrum bill every year for the five years by
Yeah.
whatever number you quoted. Um, that's going to save our assessments, that's going to lower my assessment, your assessment.
That's what I'm saying, I'm in favor of that, some of that, you know, savings showing up in the assessment, that's what, not saying give everybody a check.
Oh, no, never do that.
No.
But then you, you want to take a look at our reserves also, we're dealing with ridiculous low cost amount.
So I, I'm going to be doing that with this, I'm going to be doing that when I get into the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. I think that's my job, is to put ideas out there for us to consider for how we're going to use our money, so this is just something I put out there for discussion.
Mary, I have a question for you on, uh, you, you mentioned the amount that we've had eighty-five percent of our assessments paid.
Yep.
Um, and of course that means they have probably paid a lower amount than the total assessment.
Correct.
How do we handle that within the budget? Do we look at the income from the assessments as if everybody paid early? Or do we look at that the total amount?
I have a historical, I look back several years at what percentage of our residents always pay by December first and get the maximum discount through, and I use that average, that typical run rate to, to apply to the next year's assessment to project what I'm going to have. So I know what we need, we, we established the budget, we know what the assessment needs to be. I back up from that, how much I've got to charge for an assessment, so that when everybody gets their discounts and we pay our admin fee, we get what we need to
Good. It shows in the budget, the, the assessment is an income and then the discounts are shown as expenses.
Yeah, I have that, I didn't, um, didn't put it here, but when I do the twenty twenty-three, the, the gory detail will be there of all my assumptions for all the discounts.
So this expense account for the TV, for a cable TV, um, that's six sixty-five eighty-nine is with that after that's been applied? The discount and when you lowered it?
No, that is, that's not applying the, the sign-on bonus to anything, that's just the new contract. Um, so when we originally put the budget in place, we had budgeted seven hundred and seven thousand for Spectrum, it's now down to six hundred and sixty thousand. And that's because when we signed the new contract, the rate per home is less than what we're paying today. Right now, our, our, our door charge for everything, the, the two cable boxes, the high-speed internet, all the taxes, about forty-two dollars, forty-three dollars a house, is going down to thirty-nine.
Can I just say, good job on the contract?
Right, well, yeah.
Yeah, I know, Carlos, America, she's giving us a DVR and everything.
Well, yeah, and with, okay, we'll go over the Spectrum contract, but, but, you know, I think, um, when I get to the Spectrum contract, I'll kind of share some
Yeah.
about why that is, but, um, yes. So that I've got filtered in here, because that's a real expense. I did have the, uh, park manager starting today, so the fact that we, that'll be delayed will give us some more savings in our salary. In the original budget, we had agreed to fund fifty percent of the park manager's salary through the uncommitted fund balance um, for two years, while we just made sure this is the right answer for the park. Um, we're not going to need to draw, uh, any money out of that this year because of the delay in hiring. Um, we're going to be able to fund, um, the park manager whenever he comes on board, he or she, without dipping into that uncommitted fund balance.
Is that money that we didn't use for his salary, can that go to the reserve fund?
Absolutely. It's, it's in a fund that we can, that, that is ours to decide. It's uncommitted, so, um, we now have more money to consider what to do with going forward. Um, what else did I make for changes in here? Um, the original budget for insurance, um, I, it's less now, because we're, with a different insurance carrier, and we've been able to save money on our insurance premiums, so there's a savings there that I reflected. But on the flip side, I've increased the, um, office budget, because we're buying some additional computer equipment that's really needed for the, for everybody. So I've had to add some money to that. Um, so that's kind of where we are, when we set the original budget in place, we were going to be flat. Where we're going to only be seven hundred and fifty-four dollars of, uh, income over expenses. Now we're going to have about four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars of, um, income over expenses that can go into the general fund. So, um,
It'll help.
It'll help a lot, um, especially when we start looking at twenty-three, twenty-four.
Mary, she's got, uh, FOB, Security for Workshop.
Yes.
Of a net income of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Where is that?
Clear at the bottom. On the second page or close to the bottom in that group.
Mary, it's right in here.
Woodshop fob.
Oh, woodshop, that's a capital, that was one of the, that goes into the, um, district projects lineup above. So the first group is what we've done already, that adds up to twenty-one thousand nine seventy-two. And then we've got some additional things that we're going to be doing, thirty-five, six twenty-six approximately. Which brings, if you go back up to the expense, the last item on the expense line for fifty-seven, five ninety-eight. So that's not income.
That's, okay.
That's an expense.
I understand too now, but the, uh, woodshop has another payment to make on the fobs this year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what is it, nine hundred and some dollars?
Yep.
Nine, oh, I'm, yeah.
Yep. And I think I also put in here, let me see, I meant to if I didn't. Okay, there is some more miscellaneous income due for the, um, contents of the, um, beautification club. A little sales boutique that they've got, um, we, we, um, are letting them purchase the inventory and pay us back, we haven't received that yet. But we have that coming in as well.
So when you take that money in, where do you direct that to?
Miscellaneous income.
Okay.
Yep, it's in there, that, that amount's in there. So this is kind of just a, a snapshot, um, we're not going to be restating the budget, that would be, it's just understanding where, with everything that we didn't know then and we know now, where we think we're going to probably end the year, so that the next board meeting we have on the twentieth, I'm going to be presenting the first draft of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Um, and we'll see what that's going to look like with all of these assumptions built into it. And others that we're going to be discussing today. Alright, so this is just kind of a snapshot of where we are. Alright.
Any other discussion? With that, let's go ahead with the next item, which is the, uh, Spectrum contract.
So, um, there's a lot of changes, I think I briefly went over these at one of the prior board meetings, but I, um, I gave you a nice little rundown of, of the changes, it's going to be a five-year contract. The previous contract we had had a five percent annual increase, this one's going to have a three percent annual increase. Uh, the current rate we're paying today is forty-four dollars and twelve cents per home, it's going to start out at thirty-nine. And you'll see that it will take well into the fifth year of the contract before we get to a per-door charge that we're paying today. So this is going to be savings every year over the next five years versus what we're paying, paying today. Um, and we're getting an additional community channel, and we're getting the option to replace one of your HD boxes with a DVR. And we're getting the option to replace your, um, modem. Um, you may have your own personal Wi-Fi router in your house, you'll have the option of replacing your modem with one that has Wi-Fi capability. So you don't have to have your own Wi-Fi, and you won't be paying that five dollars a month that you're paying today for your Wi-Fi router, or the money you're paying today. And I've kind of outlined what, what the savings is. I mean, if you were to go to the TV program that we have, which is the Spectrum TV Select, uh, anybody that doesn't live in trailer states, it would cost you seventy-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents a month. To add the entertainment package, which is another whole list of channels, which we're going to get, would be an additional twelve dollars. To get two HD receivers, you'd be paying twenty. And to get an HD receiver and a DVR would be about twenty-two. And to get the high-speed internet that we're offering, it would be ninety-four ninety-nine. And then if you, um, were renting that Wi-Fi router, an additional five dollars. So, if you had a DVR, if you had everything you're getting today, and you were living anywhere else but trailer states, it would cost you two hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-six cents per month before all of the surcharges and fees and things that get charged. Um, so it's a, it's a huge savings, uh, to the residents here for this bulk contract. Now, I said, the, the rates and the deals, um, are incredible. Um, I had a resident bring to my attention, um, a lawsuit that was placed on Spectrum. A terrible, terrible multimillion-dollar lawsuit. Because one of their Spectrum people went to a home and then returned to that home later and assaulted the elderly woman that lived there. And I said, tell me why in a fifty-five and older community, I should renew this contract if this is the risk that our elderly people have? Because I don't think I want to do that. I want to know what you're doing to address what happened, and that you're going to make sure this never happens again. And I said, because I don't think I can recommend this until you promise me that you've done what you need to do to make sure that never happens again. It went all the way up in Spectrum, went all the way up. I got emails, I got, you know, that, you know, what they're doing, what they're, to protect that. Um, and I think, I don't know if that had any impact in what they're throwing at us to get us to renew. Because I've said, I don't think I could on good faith bring this forward until I have that assurance. Um, and I don't know if that had any impact, but they're throwing at me a lower rate, a sign-on bonus, and you know, all these extra things, I have to believe that they're concerned about their reputation. And they want, these bulk contracts are huge, because it's guaranteed income, no matter what. Um, and they threw this at me, and I went, you know, I threw in the DVR, that was about the only thing I threw in that they didn't already offer me right out of the gate, when they wanted, they were concerned that I wasn't going to renew. So, I don't know, I'll never know for sure, if I hadn't done that, what I would have gotten for a contract, but.
This is an additional comment on the situation with the security. On our, uh, April coffee break, we're having the crime control officer come in that will be able to address a lot of those situations, what residents can do to prevent that from happening.
Well, I, I know I had a personal, um, interaction with the Spectrum person who, uh, has this area. Um, because she went to a home here in the park and was removing the equipment for non-payment of bill. And he called the office, and I happened to be here, so I drove right down to the house. And I said, you are not taking that equipment. That, you know, you can take the Wi-Fi router, but you're replacing it with a non-Wi-Fi router, and if you want to take the DVR, you're replacing it with an HD box. That equipment goes with the address, and it's paid for by the bulk contract. She was wonderful. She was wonderful, she's, she's, we got on the phone, she put me on speakerphone, I explained to it. We made sure that resident got the equipment he was entitled to under the bulk contract. And, um, and that was fine. But I said, you know, we're, we're getting some changes coming on in this, are you going to be handling this district? Because we're going to be having our residents switch from HD boxes to DVR boxes, and switching from non-Wi-Fi modems to Wi-Fi modems, and just the process of doing that here with people that may not understand, is going to be huge. And she, you know, she said, thank you for letting me know, uh, because this is my area, she was a young girl, she was great. She was very, very nice. Um, that's going to help me a lot, knowing what I, I should be anticipating. So that when that happens, we can do the best job we can of, of that transition. She's very familiar with working with, um, older people and, and some people that are very tech savvy and some people that aren't. Um, Spectrum does not have a dedicated group of customer service people that handle a certain age bracket or, or um, communities like this, which is very disappointing, and that feedback's been given back to them. But, um, the, the transition is going to be challenging with all this equipment transfers out, and I'm still working with them on a way to make that the best possible transition it can be.
Are we going to have to exchange all of our boxes? Now I've got a DVR and I've got my own Wi-Fi modem, and I've got a regular cable box. Only that, unless we change to a different box type.
So it sounds to me like the only thing you're going to have to do is swap out your router for one that has Wi-Fi capability, if you want to. Okay? You're using your own personal Wi-Fi router and it's working great for you, you can leave well enough alone. And you, you won't, you shouldn't be paying the five dollars a month. No, you're not, you're not renting.
Yeah, well, I use my personal.
Okay, you should personally, I, I, I'm the same way, I don't have one I rent from them, because I didn't want a five-dollar bill. But I, if I want to take my router home with me when I go home, I can, I can swap out the Wi-Fi router here, and I won't have to pay the five dollars for it.
The, did they, are they going to have to make infrastructure changes? I mean, five hundred megabyte internet, I mean, to me it sounds like a fiber optic speed, are they going to have to make in, infrastructure changes in the park to do this?
I think they're already, um, putting that in. Um, and they, they just haven't flipped the switch that says we now get it.
Because if they are, I'd like to, one thing I like to have them do is they've got great big amplifier boxes right on the center line of the swale in several, several places, and they got, they got solid pads they're on. It's like a dam right in the middle of the swale in numerous places in the park.
Oh, okay. Well, I need to set up some time for their tech people to meet our tech people.
Right.
Um, to talk about the community channel. So, um, that would be a good time.
Add that right to it.
Yep, that would be a good time to do that as well. I'm in the process of trying to coordinate that.
Alright.
Okay.
I'd like to participate in that if there's an option.
That sounds like it makes a lot of sense.
Yes.
So I haven't gotten the official, very wordy, three-hundred-page contract that we're going to have to have reviewed by our attorney, that's going to talk about all of this yet. I was supposed to have it for today and I didn't, just like we're supposed to have Wi-Fi at the new maintenance building and we don't.
And we don't.
And I've been trying to get that, I'm going to probably do what I hate to do and say I'm not signing the contract until you get me service at that building, because I've been working on that for two weeks now and we haven't got it yet. Um, but this is what we're looking at. The quicker we, we get what we need and we get it signed, the quicker we get the lower rate and we get that sign-on bonus, so.
So do we have to bring this back at another board meeting to get your appro, to give approval for?
I think we need the, the, um, yes, because I need to get that ugly several-page contract and review it, make sure there's nothing in there that is a surprise.
It needs to be signed by the...
I'm sorry?
When does it need to be?
It needs to be signed by, um, March, the middle of March, in order to lock in these rates.
So we got enough meeting to do that?
Yeah, if, I explained to them our, the way we work.
Yeah.
And, um, and so I needed, I needed enough time to get through our, our regular process, and so they, they accommodated that with the deadline. Yep.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay, let's jump to the next one, which is the recurring agenda item of changing to the deed restrictions.
Yep, so I had asked that we make this a recurring agenda item, just because I think it's time for us to take a good hard look at our deed restrictions, and we have the opportunity to change those with a referendum in our December election. Um, we just need to be prepared and talk about them and get the referendum question drafted and all that stuff. So I just took a stab at what I saw in the deed that I thought um, might be an opportunity to change, and, and this, these are just me. So, look, looking forward to see what other people think, and I'm, no feelings hurt if you all think these are absolutely no's, okay? Um, we have, uh, two streets in the, uh, district that are... We have two streets in the district that are approved dog owner streets. Those were put in place many, 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 many years ago. And, and since we've, we've always said we're not a dog-friendly park and we want to stand by that. Is, do we still need to designate those two streets as non, outside of the others?
Yes. Because if, if, if I, if I lived over there and I had a critter, I don't have to register the critter in the office. I don't have to go to my doctor and get any forms because I live in the pet section. And so if you suddenly wave your magic wand and you take away my pet section, now you're forcing me into a corner on my pet that is a part of my family. And I did everything right. I bought in the pet section. I live in the pet section. And suddenly you're saying there's no pet section. That's not right.
And, and that's just my. Can we grandfather those that are there now, but any people who buy in the future? Uh, it, it's just a suggestion. I'm perfectly fine with it not being changed.
I, I like the, the thought of being able to say, look, if you want to buy in the park and you've got a pet, then we have a pet section. Buy a home in the pet section. Uh, that's just.
Okay. Like I said, I just threw it out there.
I agree with, I agree with that. And I really don't want to go through the expense of changing just that.
I think it's a fight that doesn't have a lot of merit.
Okay, that's fine. Like I said, I was looking at it and that's, that's fine. The next one, we've talked about changing before. And that's the, I, I've made two changes there. One, that you can't rent your property for less than thirty, that should probably be thirty days. Yeah. Versus, this kind of takes care of the Airbnbs and the VRBOs. But I also have removed the fact that you can't sublease your property, which is allowed in our deed now, which I don't think we would ever want. If I'm renting something from you, Russell, renting your home, I can turn around and rent it to Todd.
Then, that's, that should be between you and Russell. I, as a board member, don't want to get involved in your personal rental stuff. Russell has to say to Mary, you can't sublease and, and, and if you sublease to Todd, that's Russell's problem. That's not mine. I don't want you.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want any of y'all in my office about that one. Now, I do like the, that they have to be, the lease has to be greater than thirty-one days. I like that because that says that you have to be fifty-five or older. Cause we don't allow people to stay more than, less, more than thirty days when they're underage. So I like that part, but the sublease.
Okay.
The sublease, I'm, I'm not in favor of because I don't want, I don't think it's our place to be involved in y'all's personal.
Okay.
How you rent your property.
Okay.
I don't think this language precludes you from running less than thirty-one days. All it says is, when you read it, they have to approve all leases that are greater than thirty-one days. If it's under thirty-one days, it just says you don't have to approve it. That's what I read when I read this.
Then that needs to be definitely handled differently.
Needs to specifically say, you can't lease less than thirty-one days someplace.
I thought we changed to one of the PPs to include thirty-one days for the Airbnb's.
It's, we wanted to. We couldn't because of the deed restriction. I don't think.
Oh, some reason I thought we changed it.
Yeah, I thought.
I don't have a clue. I don't have a clue. Cause we talked about it under, when Mike was the chairman. We, we had talked about it and that was one of his, his things that he wanted to see done, but we couldn't. As I recall it, we couldn't do anything because of the deed restriction. We couldn't change the deed restrictions. So when we changed the charter and then we can address deed restrictions in a simple referendum. Because prior to our new charter, to get the deed restrictions changed, the referendum was so stupid in the fact that if there were four P, five, let's go five people that owned a property together, you had to get all five people to vote and you had to know if these two voted yes and these three voted no. Then the vote for the property was a no. They didn't count each individual person who voted and it was just an absolute nightmare the way it was four years ago to do a, a deed restriction change. That's why nobody touched the deed restriction. Now we've got it as part of the charter that we can do it under referendum. Now it's more logical. It always should have been that way, the way we're doing it now. But it wasn't back then. And so we, I don't think he did anything with the.
No, I don't think so either. So.
Dwayne's, Dwayne said, yes.
It, it stayed thirty, for the deed restrictions that said thirty days for a guest. But when we got into the bylaws, we changed it to thirty-one days for the Airbnb's.
It, it.
I will.
It might be under rules and regulations, guests, visitors, that'd be part A in rules and regs.
Okay.
But I.
I don't want, I don't want to waste a whole bunch of time here while I'm looking for this.
Yeah. So I mean, we can, we'll go back and revisit whether any, it sounds like nothing needs to be changed to ten and twelve, but.
Well, twelve might need changing. We might need it to flat out say, if we're going to, if we're going to fix any deed restrictions, we might as well. If that's the only thing and it's fixed elsewhere, maybe we don't need it, but.
I think you got to fix the one, I think you got to fix the one that says what you want to change and then make sure what else, what, what else it affects. You know, and I have another, another comment. You know, Airbnb isn't really the opponent. The opponent is short-term rental. Whether they come from Airbnb or your cousin or whoever it is.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I agree.
Exactly.
We, we were, the, the thing we want is people, we don't want people coming in here for two weeks and using this place like it's Club Med instead of a retirement community.
Right. And, and underage.
And underage.
And that would stop, that would stop the underage if they have to be here through, more than thirty days.
It slows it down because.
Well, yeah.
They can't, it's hard to take your kid out of school for a month in the winter.
As long as they register when they get here, then we can know when they start and stop.
Yeah, it's easier than it was.
Without registration, you really can't tell anything.
Right. Again, requires them to follow the rules.
Correct.
Back, just back up. I forgot to ask a question. Were you designating?
Yep.
Does that include the west side or east side of Texas? Cause that's pet friendly now, as I understand.
There's a.
There's been no.
Two streets, New Jersey and.
From twenty-three hundred over, from Tex, uh, Texas, all the way back. So there's only three streets and they're on the north side. No, Tennessee's not important.
It's just. Texas or just the east side of Texas?
It's just from.
What side?
One side.
One side.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it, it, it actually falls in line there. It's not anything down towards the back fence. It's all, everything towards Florida.
From the canal south.
From the canal south.
Yeah.
Is where it happens. We have that map that shows that.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it. I'm not seeing it right. Oh, there it is. I just have to be able to find the word map. Right there, the, the dark black, that's the, that's the pet section.
That's the three, the three streets where it goes from Texas all the way back to New Jersey.
Okay.
And that, that's been the pet section.
Also, okay, so it's just a block long. It's the.
Right.
It's a, starts.
Sixty-six hundred block.
Yep. Starts at twenty-three. It goes all the way back.
Yeah.
And you can get to that map on the website.
Yeah, I'll check it out.
Map.
So Russell, you had a change that you wanted to talk about in the deed as well, since we're on deed.
Yeah. Is what I was interested in doing was adding a clarification, the forty-eight hour timeframe to the deed restrictions number six regarding parking, storing, loading off, loading repairs, cleaning, boats, travel trailers or motorhomes, et cetera, on a property. Uh, so if we do this, this was brought up in two thousand and twenty. And we never did anything with it. Allowing people a forty-eight hour timeframe. Uh, most people, every time you say something, they say, oh, we thought we had three days. Which, that was a rumor, I guess. It got started years ago. This is nothing new. Lou and I deal with this. Every time someone brings a boat in here or a trailer of any sort, everybody calls us and says, oh, they've been there. You know, they brought it in yesterday. It's like, okay. Well, if we amend this and, and at least allow forty-eight hours, we would be able to, uh, your public relations guy and, and Ashley, the owners too, would know that they have, they can bring their trailer home and unload it. They can bring their boat home, charge their battery, bring it back to the storage lot, you know, that kind of stuff. Cause we just get an enormous amount of calls from people who are trying to tell us that people have brought their motor home there and they're living in it for the last month or so, which is not true. Generally, they're bringing it home, they're unloading and offloading.
And cleaning.
And cleaning it up. So you really need time to do that because we don't have anywhere for anybody to do that here. Unless they want to go down to the storage lot in the dirt and clean their boat. They can't charge their batteries in the storage lot.
There is power there.
But you would have to move your boat around and reposition it. When I get people bringing them home to.
When you don't have people using that for extra storage spaces.
Right, right. So it is kind of difficult. This forty-eight hours might, might get rid of a lot of headaches for public relations person seeing that.
I don't, I don't see a problem with it. People are doing it anyways, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
But where, where is it in the deed restrictions that, well, Russell's talking about?
He's talking about item.
Number six, yeah.
Sorry.
No boats, trailers, travel trailers. And I, and I made a copy here that showed you what it says in the deed restriction versus what needs to be added.
I guess I could go back.
Right here.
Right, right on the back, right on the back page of your agenda. Right on the other page.
I tried to make it as easy as possible. Somebody told me to do that.
Keep it simple, huh?
Keep it simple. This is.
You're good.
Sorry, I'm being bad.
I just want to make it a little more easier when you bring your boat to your house and clean it, Dwayne. And people don't call me and go, he's had it there for two days now and you just got it there yesterday or this morning.
And, and so there, this wouldn't create a loophole where I could bring my boat, have it there for forty-eight hours, take it off-site to twenty-four and then bring it back and have it there for forty-eight hours, then take it off-site.
That's what I was going to bring up.
No, by then, I can give you a verbal and then I can follow up with a fine.
Well, it's, to me, that's still a lot of work. If, if we're going to change that, what I'd like to see there is you can't put the trailer or vehicle on your lot unless you come to the office and pre-registered. So you know that the individual came in.
Yeah.
Who was united ten-thirty, you know, cause there's no enforcement.
Well, I should probably say.
Even if I change it, there's no enforcement.
Right. But like to, to prevent what she was saying about, you know, take it home for twenty-four hours and then bring it, bring it back. You know, I mean, I should say within like thirty days or something, twenty-four hour, forty-eight hours within thirty days.
Well, there are people that already play that game.
I know. That's what I'm saying.
That's why.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I've been able to do is, is go back to and verbally let them know what the fine is if it's brought back. And, and I don't have to do another verbal, then I can just send the fine, like you said earlier, just send it out there. So it, it is, it's already been played with and, and messed around and we're getting called on stuff that people aren't really sure about. They just say it's been there and it's not. But we got to do something. Otherwise, I'm going to blow it off personally. As the board member, I'm going to blow it off and go, well, they'll move it later. Because how many times am I going to go over there?
Right.
Could you, could you do it forty-eight hours within a thirty-day time period?
That's.
That's what I thought.
Something like that, that would.
How, how often does a boat owner have to charge their batteries?
Well, it depends. Like, I, I had a truck to mine every time I go out fishing. Okay, cause I, I use a troll motor of mine. I get back. But I do it in the marina because I've got a slip.
Right.
If you don't have a slip, then yeah, you're going to have to pull it home and plug it in.
Storage loters.
Generally overnight.
So the, every thirty days might not be, I mean, it's still.
We still don't want people bringing their boats home every night and, and charging them all the time. So. I mean, they, they need to determine or they need to find an alternative way to do that. But this allows, just like right now, my boat's been sitting in the storage lot because I haven't had a slip now for a month and a half.
Right.
I need to bring it home and I need to charge the batteries. So it's going to be there overnight at least one day. And then I'll get it back in the water and I'll be gone.
And I'll give him a verbal right away.
Todd, don't answer your phone.
Probably just walk across the street.
But, but that's really what it's, and I like the ideal about.
So you will make those other changes that we've discussed and bring that back to the next board. Just listen to what Mary had and what Russell was proposing. I'm, I guess I want to avoid piecemealing the uh, deed restrictions and that stuff, because I don't want to go out every year and try to amend the deed restriction. So if we're going to do it, let's do it at one time.
Right.
But I don't want to have fifty items that's going to go out for a boat, because that's going to cost.
No, it needs to be the right thing.
So, I don't want to go through just because it says a war is out of misplaced. I don't want to change.
Nope.
Or some silly thing like.
You want me to go back to, because this was something that was, um, you know, Mike's charge back when we were do, when we were changing the charter, he had plans of deed, deed restrictions that needed. You want me to? Just to vote and see if it's still relevant and if we want to pick up the charge with any vote.
This came from.
You know, it wouldn't hurt.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll have that for the next board meeting.
I mean, all I wanted to do is make sure that if, that we're aware that we can make changes through a referendum on the vote in December. And if we want to do anything, we should start talking about it now and talk about it often. So that it's not a surprise to anybody, even though it will be the most.
That.
So even, you know, even though the ones that I'm suggesting are probably not going to go anywhere, there may be others that we need, we need to look at our deed restrictions, every one of us, and see if there's anything else in there that this is our opportunity to revisit. And if it, if it's something we all agree should be revisited, let's get the ball in motion. If not.
Right.
Then we're good. Um, let's just talk about it.
All right. Okay. Now, what I'm hearing from this, right as we stand right this second, is we're piecemealing. Mary's going to make the changes to what she was recommending.
Well, I'm not.
Russell's going to work because of the thirty-one day. Russ, maybe. Russell's going to make the changes. Do you guys want me to be the central clearinghouse? You make the changes, give them to me. Russell make the changes, give them to me. I'll do the PP thirty-eight and attach all the, what you guys have given me. And then we bring it at the board meeting. Does that sound like a plan?
Yeah, and everybody else might have an opportunity.
Right. Anybody else that has anything that they see.
The one that, the only one of mine that we're thinking, that I'm thinking we're moving forward is the thirty-one days. And that was one of the ones that Mike was working on. So if you can find it.
If I find the.
Then that should take care of it.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right.
But again, I don't want to change.
Right. I agree.
Just.
We got to look and see if it's.
Right.
If it's.
The referendum questions need to be for the things that are the most impactful and not these little tiny changes. I agree one hundred percent.
Yep. I agree.
So, um.
Okay, so everybody else, all the rest trustees are going to look through the deed restrictions, make any comments and filter that back to Lori in addition to these two. All right.
Can I leave this as a recurring agenda item?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the next one is something I'm bringing forward on behalf of three residents. Three completely different residents on three different occasions that all said the same thing to me. So I felt like it needed to be filtered up and discussed. We've said on, on several occasions, usually it's right around election time, how disappointed we are with the, um, a number of people that actually get out and vote during our trustee election. And it's such a tiny percentage of the property owners in the park that actually participate in that. And a suggestion was if you want more people to vote, you need to move the election from December to January when most of, a lot more people are here. Cause people aren't going to request the absentee ballots for the December um, election only and worry about changing, you know, they, they just aren't doing it. So if we were to change our elections to be in January and have our terms go January to January, more people would be here, more people would probably vote. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that was a suggestion. And I said I would bring it forward for discussion. I'm not saying I support it. I'm just saying I, I said I'd bring it home first. I'd bring it to the table for discussion.
Is there any issue from the supervisor elections office?
We pay for the election no matter when we run it. So whether we run it in December or January, we're going to be paying for it.
I, I, I understand that. I, I, I understand that, Piers, but there's a little something that's ticking in my brain saying, I think that they're restricted to what they can do and when they can do voting for positions. You can do a referendum vote anytime you want to pay for it. But I think that there may be a problem at the supervisor of elections office when it comes down to position voting. I don't think that the, the county commissioners can have their vote in April if they so desire. For some reason at the supervisor of elections office, there's something ticking in the back of my brain. So we need to check with that too, if we want to move forward.
If we want to move forward with this, that's something that we would have.
We would have to check the supervisor of elections too. There's, there's just something and it's, it's just far enough out that I can't get my hand around it. Dwayne's over here shaking his head yes because he's probably thinking that, that there's something.
Okay.
In the peripheral of his thoughts.
I've already talked to the supervisor of elections for Manatee County. As long as we change the charter.
Okay.
That says we're going to hold the elections. We can change any date. But my concern is, is if the residents don't have enough ambition to get their absentee ballots and that stuff to vote, I don't care.
Okay.
What, what I do care is if, uh, in talking with the Manatee County elections, it would be better for us to change our voting date from December to November when the presidential elections are. We don't pay the six to seven thousand dollars. Every year that we do it, including the, uh, staff that comes in and runs the.
Right.
The election.
Which was very expensive.
We're going to be saving at least six, seven thousand. And that, I'm really sorry residents, but if you don't want to take time to listen to the meetings or take initiatives to vote, that's a puke. I, I'm sorry. It, it's participatory and I, I just don't have those feelings.
I'm not sure that putting our trustee elections in with the general election is a good idea. Because the general election, just like with the voting for the fire department, if you were a resident in general election, you vote, but for trustees, you have to be a property owner.
Yeah.
So that, so now, now you're mixing two groups together and we're asking uh, election officials sitting at the desk to determine, do you get a general election ballot? Do you get a trustee-only ballot? Because if I'm registered in Michigan, but I happen to be down here, I can vote for trustees because I'm a property owner.
Right.
But I can't vote for general election. So putting the two together, I think is a way bigger problem than six thousand dollars that we pay for the election.
I think that's a question for the election board to see whether they can handle it.
Ask him that.
I mean, there's already, you get different ballots.
I say, I'm sure, I'm sure they can handle that, but it'd be a question to ask them.
They should have a list of everybody, what they get.
How, how, how they would handle it is the, you know.
Yeah.
Didn't we have something one time where, um, renters were voting for trustees once? Didn't we run into that once?
Oh, I'm sure there is.
Oh, I can, I'm pretty sure we've had that happen.
Okay.
I can think of a particular person that I know voted for trustee that.
Okay.
Shouldn't have been able to.
It's only going to be magnified.
But we, but we have to put that ownership on the trust, on the supervisor of elections to make sure they don't give a ballot to somebody that's not entitled to one.
Sure. I don't know how to correct, uh, where people ask for their, uh, mail-in ballots and they don't get them.
That's between them and supervisor elections.
Supervisor elections, so.
So do we want to make this something where we change it to November instead of January?
Dwayne's going to follow up on it.
Follow up just to see about the election ballots.
Because I think that's a great idea. Okay. Dave Sumula.
So I'm going to put it in your court, Dwayne. You're going to, you're going to do the checking and then you'll bring it back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Moving right along.
Okay, the next item we have is the draft property owner's letter for the loan payments.
So I, I got a lot of feedback the last time letters went out on this, that they were very confusing. Um, nobody understood them. So I need, I need some real honest feedback about this letter that, you know, if, when people get it, are they going to understand what this is allowing them to do? Without it being three pages long and very involved. Yes, Lou.
I got one on the, on the page in the right here, the, the invoice. Still, and we talked about this before, I think, I don't agree with saying the total assessment fifteen oh six and then the prepayment is thirteen hundred because it looks like a two hundred dollar savings, but everybody's already made one payment.
That, I, I, I wanted to kind of, I should have said before, I, the contents of the letter is what I'm looking at for feedback now, not the numbers.
Okay.
Okay. The numbers are going to be very specific to each person's property, whether they're a single lot or one and a half or two. Um, so, but, but the actual content of the letter is what I'm hoping somebody can help me make sure it is not going to be totally confusing to the person receiving it. Because I live, I, I am so deep into this that it makes perfect sense to me, but I need it to make sense to somebody who's not deep into it. So I need your help there.
Well, just looking at the first paragraph on the, uh, the second sentence that says against residential properties within the district to fund the reconstruction and replacement. I, it wasn't a total reg, I'm sorry. It wasn't a whole, a replacement. It was just a repair. And we just say, uh, to fund the repair and reconstruction of the seawall to the district marina. Period.
So just the reconstruction, take out the word replacement. And so to fund the reconstruction of the seawall system adjacent to the district marina. Okay.
I would just take out the adjacent too.
Okay.
Because it's at the marina.
Okay.
Keep it simple. Yep. That's great.
You might want to put your, uh, put your, uh, extension number down here on, because when you call the office, they're not going to understand a hundred percent this.
Oh, Mike's, yeah, okay.
And I think you just covered it. Yep. This is going to be an individualized. I screwed that up again.
That's okay.
So when my letter comes, it's not going to say one property at fifteen hundred. Mine's actually going to say two properties or two and a half or three. And it's actually going to have my total dollar method up. It'll be, and my savings for that for them to reply.
Yep.
To me, that's.
Pretty simple.
Pretty simple.
Now, the one thing that this letter doesn't have in it, and that, this is, I mean, this is where I, it is a borderline, how confusing you want the letter to be. It doesn't state that this is a non-refundable prepayment. When you make it, it goes with the property. Okay? So if you decide to sell the property, you don't get your money back. If you pass away and the property is, whoever inherits the property um, gets the property with this already prepaid and it won't be part of any future assessment on that property. Okay, so it, in the, you know, so people need to know that this is a very individualized decision when they're doing this and they need to understand everything that goes with that decision. Um, there's something else that, you know, they need, yes, you're going to save a little bit of money upfront. But the, these assessments are part of your total non-add valour today. So the assessment that went out for a single lot was thirteen hundred dollars and it included the hundred dollars of the loan. So when you file your income tax return, you're putting thirteen hundred dollars on your income tax return for what you paid for your property taxes. Okay? You prepay this loan, you, you may save your money, but now you're only putting twelve hundred dollars on your income tax return. Now, whether or not that's going to make any difference to you from a tax perspective, I don't know that.
No.
That's a very individualized decision as to what, if this is the right decision for you from not only personal standpoint, but you know, your, your taxes, everything. And I, there's a lot that needs to be considered with this. And I don't know how much of an obligation we have to make sure people know. Unless it's just you need to have a conversation with your tax advisor about whether or not this is the right decision for you. Maybe that disclaimer needs to be on there.
That can go in your, if you choose.
But I, I, yeah, I, I think you've got it probably well covered there on the, if you choose to prepay your share, blah, 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 blah. And then, uh, in, or it says make checks payable, you can also say this is a non-refundable.
Yeah.
Just the best, in my opinion, the best place to put it is if you choose to prepay your share, it is not refundable and you will need to remit X dollars. So if you choose to prepay your share, it is not refundable and you will need to remit. And so then it doesn't muddy up the make checks payable to.
Is prepay the right word? Is it prepay or payoff?
No, it's a prepay.
It's a prepay loan.
I don't like the quote marks around prepay.
Okay.
I mean, if you're.
Okay.
Makes it sound like, hey, wait a, wait a minute, there's something else there.
Should prepay be hyphenated, pre hyphen pay?
Oh, I don't know. It's that, not that way in the, in the resolution. So I just kind of.
So we'll leave it there. All right. So you're saying take off the quote marks.
We can do that.
So then we'd also get rid of the initial cap prepay? It'd just be a small?
Yes. And then, then it's a, if you choose to prepay your share, comma, um, it will be refundable. Um, you will need to remit. Okay. All right. And I'll add my extension where people can reach me and then, um, the invoice that will be returned will be very personalized. Um, there's a whole database that I'm building that this will do a mail merge to pull in everybody's individual information.
Since we took out the statements in that first paragraph, the adjacent to the
Yeah.
district marina.
Yeah.
Should we, um, when it says of the, can we put marina seawall? So, because if we ever have to repair another seawall, do we have any more seawall that we?
We better not have to repair.
We will be long gone before that.
No, no, not, I'm saying like at the end of the street here where it comes up to sixty-ninth street. Um, do we ever, do we ever have to repair that?
That's county property and county takes care of that.
Okay, so there's no other seawall in the park.
Not that I know of.
Okay, then we don't need that. Thank you. Understood.
All right.
Okay. The fewer words, the better.
Nope. That's what I was trying to do without, but I.
No, you did.
I wanted to make sure that it gave them what they need.
Right.
Without confusing them.
Right.
Um, because like I said, this is like, I've been living this so much that, just because I get it doesn't mean somebody hasn't been living it will get it.
I assume if I own five parcels, I'm going to get five letters.
You are.
Mm-hmm.
Because they're all going to have a different parcel number. Yep. Yep. And it is going to get mailed to the same address that your tax bill gets mailed to. So if you don't have the right address with Manatee County, you're not going to get this letter. So make sure you've double-checked online that your tax bill address is correct because you can change it online if you need to. Because otherwise, you're not going to get this.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion?
Like ten minutes to twelve.
I'd like to break.
Um, it's office hours and that could be, that could be a lengthy one.
This is going to be a lengthy one.
Yep. You want to do mine real quick before break? Mine won't take long.
No. Which, which one do you?
It's the fifty-fifty. It's real simple.
Okay, sure.
It's a use of the fifty-fifty money for dances. Um, we've been doing fifty-fifties since the dance started in November and, um, learned that they're, they're, they weren't part of the projected income on the budget. So they are non-committed. Am I saying that right?
Yep.
Non-committed funds. Um, we have about thousand five in the fifty-fifty budget. Um, and before I do much more with this money, which I've been tapping into, um, I want to make sure it's okay with the board that I use it. I'm using it for like, um, like snacks for showtime, that kind of thing, things I didn't, I didn't budget for it. Um, I just want to make sure it's okay that I do this before I do anymore. You know, kind of like begging for forgiveness versus asking for permission. Um, so is that okay? I mean, because they're kind, it's coming in every time you have dance, we're, we're adding to the funds.
What's the accumulation of the funds?
About a thousand and five right now, give or take. I mean, it's a, it's a nice little chunk of change.
Are you splitting that with reoccurring also?
No, not right now. Honest, I mean, I really, I mean, Rod and I've talked.
There's a lot of work involved in selling.
It's, it's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work and.
And it's just that it's, it's money that we wouldn't even, we didn't even think about it when the budget was done last year. Um, but it, it defrays the cost. Like, you know, we had that movie contract that I wasn't, wasn't planning on doing and that was twenty, out of my dance account. So it really offsets. We can add a little bit more to some of our events is, and I can, and I, whatever left over, I would be happy to give to continuing rec.
Oh, you're not going to have any leftovers.
I, I, I rat hole money.
I don't think we should discourage your creative.
I agree.
I don't want to make it, it's okay that I do this. I don't.
Make it at your event, then you use it at your events.
Well.
I don't think we want to budget.
No.
I agree.
This is just, this is just gravy money.
It's just, yeah, it is.
And, and use it like you're saying, but I, I don't think we should ever put it in our budget. She said we didn't budget for it and I'm thinking, I don't want to budget for it.
I never know what we're going to get because a lot of folks won't buy it because I do the drawing late at night and they don't want to stay. That will change next year when it's not a clock, but.
Yep.
So.
Right. Mary, how are you, uh, putting her money in there, this money? What does it go in? Is it just added to her budget?
It's, it's, well, it's in the actuals, but it's not in her budget. So she looks like, you know, she's making more money than she was budgeted to make, but that's just a timing thing because she's going to turn around and spend it.
Okay.
On an event in future months. So I'm not counting on it. It's just a timing variance. Um, so I'm expecting at the end of the year, her income will be, will be close to budget and her expenses, you know, we won't have any excess.
And we'll probably.
Going to use it.
As, and the, the whole seasonal rec budget, I'm waiting on to pay for the last, uh, the credit card bill. So I'll know how much from Christmas and New Year's left over. And all that will just be blended over because it's just, I don't know where we, where we left off. So at the end of season, at the end of April, it's hoping I'll have this much left over that will defray the cost of next year. That's my goal, is to try to have, and then Rod and I can negotiate what he gets.
I didn't, I didn't look at your job description. Does it end in April? Oops.
Yes, it does.
Six months, six months.
Uh, we've got a lengthy, uh, agenda, you know, and I'd like to take a, a break there at noon. Uh, with the board's permission, uh, take an hour for lunch. Uh, but I have, you know, jump into an easy one. I would like to go ahead and take a quick review of the, uh, the bingo kitchen sales. Uh, I think I've attached a letter in there from the beautification club. Um, and I think that would be an easy one to handle before we break for lunch. What they are proposing is that the, uh, beautification club take over, uh, and simplify the, uh, ordering, cooking, serving, cashiers and all this stuff. Uh, and they don't want to do it, I'm going to assume that they don't want to do it on yearly basis because you have, uh, you might have the turnaround. But what they did ask is that we would like to propose a longer arrangements of a five-year agreement with the beautification club and then would buy all the supplies, prep and all that stuff. Um, I don't mind that, but I do have a concern of committing the board to a five-year agreement.
Yeah.
Um, that was my only concern.
I understand they don't want to do monthly, but they jumped to a five-year agreement and that blew my mind. I, a, a year, a year.
A year sounds fair.
A year, a year sounds fair. They're the only ones that responded. But there's also some concerns, wasn't there something with, uh, the soup that's sold has to be prepared in the kitchen? And so it would have to be very specifically stressed that all of the state laws and rules and everything have to be followed to the letter.
Yes.
Or the agreement is null and void and yanked.
The cottage, cottage laws.
The cottage laws have to be followed.
I knew there was something that had a name.
Yeah.
We don't have anybody in. We don't have anybody and nobody else responded, so the remainder of this year, this season is fine, but that's it.
I would like to send out another letter to all the clubs in order to just to be fair with that, so.
So every year, people get a rebid for.
Approved this season.
Rather than the five-year, that probably between. The the trustee that's in charge of Bingo and the kitchen manager. Determine as far as they're doing their things right and everything right. And do it on a a basis there. If there are any issues, we don't need to make a. I don't think we need to make a five-year agreement that we face it on max at it at during a season. Uh, because I don't think they want to run it after the season with no more Bingo players than we get, but uh. I would be not in favor of anything over a year if that, and then if there was a situation that came up that they weren't following the rules that. We just ask them to stop it.
Right.
Well, let me let me jump off on that cottage law. Yeah, it's in place and it says certain things you can prepare in a kitchen, certain things you can't. A lot of that, I don't think pertains to trailer estates. The way we operate here, if you if you're going to be cooking something. Uh, for the public, you have to have your food handler's license and be through the county and all that stuff. Going to step into it. Following those rules and what how we prepare food here is really worth. Doing that kind of monitoring for somebody just to cook the soup at home and bring it in. What are the outweighing factors?
That's what they've been doing.
But but I.
I know.
But I think we've been lucky and I'm going to say this. I've talked to Terry a lot, Terry Edelberg, a lot about all this. I think we have been very lucky in not having any kind of a of a food poisoning issue. So I think what we what they do. They it's easy. It's hot dogs you cook in the kitchen. Everything has to be cooked in the kitchen. And you have to have some monitoring of temperature.
I couldn't agree more.
And nothing is cooked from home and brought.
Fact that we've always done it is a relative.
How it is. It's very simple. You could do chips and soda and ice cream and all of that. But nothing is cooked at home and brought in.
Cottage laws are put in place for a reason. And we should adhere to them.
We have to do that. It's 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 for the district's own protection. That we follow this, because it takes one incident.
Because what happens to our insurance company?
That's right. We have to follow that.
If we file a claim and we weren't following the cottage law, they might not pay it.
So we're proven for the rest of the season. New letters will go out next fall for the following season. Um, and nothing cooked at home and brought in.
And then I guess what I would do is go back to the Beautification Club and ask them if that's acceptable, if they want to accept the five. I'm sorry, yearly contract instead of the five-year, and they may not want to do that.
It's only the remainder of the season.
Yeah.
Resubmit the fall when, yeah.
And you say we had.
Beautification?
Yes.
Okay.
And correct, no other.
Nobody else wanted to try to make money to do anything.
Correct.
Yeah, the everybody said it until it came time to actually do it and now there's no answers, responses. Yeah.
Okay, and with that, I would like to take recess for one hour and be back here, if that's alright. Please turn off your microphones.
On what other trustees thought the office hours should be. And I'm just gonna open it up for discussion because I thought there was quite a few good ones in there. The one that I did like was, Mary, I think you went through and called several different parks and recreations. And to my surprise is none of them were open on, no, I'm on the wrong damn.
Office hours.
Yeah, office hours.
Yeah, we're on the right one. I went out and looked at all the special districts in Manatee County. And even specifically park and rec type districts to see what hours their office are open for. To compare it to ours and to compare it to what we, we think we'd like to put in place. And yeah, there was, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, of which we're one of. So 13 other than us.
What does it look like? Okay.
And none of them are open on Saturdays. So it doesn't mean that we won't choose to be open on a Saturday. I'm just saying that none of them are. So if, if we, my, my thought is if, if we choose not to be open on a Saturday. We at least need to have one early morning opening, like at seven. So that people can come before they go to work and one late evening in the course of the five days. And what the hours are on the other three days to make up for that, I don't know. But that should accommodate people on both ends. They can either try to get here before they go to work or get here when they get off work. Depending on what, you know, a certain day of the week. Which is not what I had on any of my scenarios below. So I've, I've. I did have a late night, I think. I had till five.
Yep.
I had start opening at eight thirty, own, not closing at lunch at all. I had the two office people alternating their lunch schedule so the window never closes and it's open till five.
I did similar on mine.
Yeah.
I just stayed open later and I opened on Saturdays also.
Okay.
Three-person rotation. I put two different options in there. One's for hiring another full-time person. And one was hiring in a second part-time person.
Yep.
Mine would require basically hiring people.
Yeah, mine, mine did the same thing. With having the full-time office manager that we've got and a part-time office assistants, assistant that was year-round. And then a seasonal office assistant that was just that seasonal.
And then Kathy, I think you put in there to have a volunteer.
Yeah, where I work for the state of Florida, there was a senior employment program that you had a volunteer. I know, I know with the volunteer, you run the risk of confidentiality issues and I get that and I, I do. But they're paid through the, through the senior employment program. So they're paid, but we don't pay them. I think it's through AARP. I'd be happy to look into that. I'm not sure if it's still going on with all the things going on in Manatee County. But vocational rehab used him as, as a receptionist forever.
Who chose that person?
They're interviewed by, by the hiring authority. So, so they, you know, they're, they're screened. Make sure that they are okay. And then, then they're interviewed by, by the, by us or park manager, whoever that person's to be responsible for them. I'd be happy to follow up and see if this is still in existence.
Would you please?
Sure.
What was that called Kathy?
The senior employment program. I think it was senior employment volunteer program. I'll follow up.
That's fine.
Sandy, did I get one from you? I don't see it here. Was it not included? Yeah.
So you had it, Todd, you had it opening at seven every day and closing at six.
Correct.
Every day. Oh, wait a minute. Okay, I get what you're saying.
Open, open seven.
Okay.
And close at six every day.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, you could, if you still wanted to take and only have it, you know, not office open at nine, that would probably be fine, but.
But you're still allowing those two hours in the morning to work?
Yes.
What would a full-time assistant cost? What, what's the annual budget now? I didn't look.
No, the, what, what we, I would offer somebody, if we were to hire a full-time office assistant today, would probably be sixteen to sixteen fifty an hour. That's not what we're paying now, but that's what I would offer to start. I think you can get somebody with the skill set we need for that. That's part-time. If you want a full-time, it depends on what you're looking for.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to combine the retirement with the office hours is let the board decide if they want to hire a second full-time individual with a part-time. But it had to be decided soon to be put into our budget for the 2024.
Correct.
My opinion, there's enough work in that office to have a full-time person for sure.
We play catch-up on a lot of stuff that we're behind on.
Right.
Would be good with that second, second person in the, especially in the off-season, would be fantastic to get things up. And then if we, when we get a park manager, if he's got some skills, then maybe we can develop some, some things that will help us out. And that would be fantastic to have somebody in the off-season. I like the hours to have somebody there till six o'clock in the evening. But I think if you're gonna stay open during the weekdays, I think you need to make it six. Because, for example, I've got a nephew that lives in the park that's still working. And he works in Sarasota and he doesn't get home until like close to six o'clock. So, but then I would like, I would, I would think the nine to 11 on Saturday would be a, a real benefit. I don't see the nine to two. I think that's too long. But there again, I mean, it's, that's time somebody could be doing something constructive.
Well, my schedule, I had it eight to 12 on Saturdays. And one person there just to handle the issues. It's gonna be mainly window work.
Let's see, I jumped right in between there. I, I'd like the seven to six with a full-time and closed on Saturdays and Sundays.
I just think being open on Saturdays takes out a lot of, a lot of problems, such as getting permits for parking, you know. They, they don't have an excuse. If you're, if you stay open late and you have a Saturday, there's no excuse for not.
Saturday, they could get registered for Saturday night dance if.
Correct. Or bingo or whatever they need to do.
Bingo for Sunday would be great, yeah. Cause I get a lot of calls from people who say, I can't register my guests, can I?
That's for the moment guests. Like I, I know that my stepson's coming the 23rd of February, I'll just fill out the paperwork.
That's just an example, yeah. That's just an example of one thing maybe.
Right, right.
I don't know what else.
I, 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 I don't know. I, again, I go for one or two mornings open at seven, one or two nights open till six. And not open on the weekend.
So just keep off the weekends.
But that's just.
That was, that was my preference also, cause it gave the opportunity for residents to come in. And after three o'clock all the way till six, which is three hours more, to do whatever business they had to do.
It would be, I mean, from my perspective, if I was doing it on a, a Saturday, it would be tough. Especially if I was the one that maybe had to do it every Saturday, or even if you alternated every other Saturday.
Right.
I mean, you're, you're working a full week and then you have to come in on Saturday. It, it makes it kinda tough.
If you look at my schedule, basically you ended up with a day off through the week and then you worked a half a day Saturday on the schedule that I had.
So all, all.
It was every third Saturday that you would have.
So everybody had to take a turn doing Saturday rotation.
Then, and then when you took your Saturday, you end up with a day off through the week.
Todd, was that including the full-time office manager for rotating?
Yeah, yes. Option one is basically the full-time person. And then option two would be a second part-time person. And it maintains the same hours.
Thank you.
So what.
Mary and Todd look almost.
It basically has the same hours, but you have less coverage, less double coverage, excuse me. And option two is basically the only difference. You still have coverages in there to cover each other for lunches. So you don't even have to close the window at lunchtime like they do now.
One thing that's nice when they close at lunchtime is they're taking care of things that. Discussing training.
I understand that completely. But see, the other problem is, is you're, when we say that they're working for, working on a lunch and they're working through their lunch. That's a, that's a violation of workforce law.
Right, I, I.
That's why there's, that's why there is lunch in, you know, included in these hours.
And they do overlap, so they could, they could converse to each other.
Correct.
During that overlap period of two hours.
I just don't wanna see us get in trouble because somebody working on their lunches all the time and, and expecting that.
Right.
With the hours now, there is no time out for lunch.
Right now Joyce is working what, ten to three thirty?
Ten to two.
Ten to two.
Ten to two. So I mean, even during this couple of months that she has left to work, if we'd even maybe try going maybe a two to six. A couple nights a week rather than her ten to two.
I'm not so sure.
Might be a trial to see how, all that would work.
I, I know definitely she can't work on Wednesday nights.
Right.
But you don't need to be, I, I don't, I really don't see you need to be open in the middle of the week as much as you need to. A Monday and Friday is probably more critical nights to be open later, although Friday night's a tough one. You wanna, you wanna get out of dock. You don't wanna have to work that late, but it is what it is.
For me, and speaking only for myself, if I put in my papers to retire in, in a, a couple of months. And you wanna change my hours and all of a sudden now I'm working three hours later in the, into the day or four hours later in the day than I ever did. I'll just retire sooner. Thank you.
And I, I agree.
Probably right.
That's a risk.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just like putting that out there that me, I would just say, okay, fine, I'll just retire. Well, good. See ya.
Well, my thoughts on this, and if I had to choose, it would probably be option one on my, my schedule that I put in. And I think we just interviewed a perfect candidate for somebody to, you know, to control the office in there basically. Have TJ still doing all the record stuff and all that. Vanessa from our interviews in last, I think would be an excellent office, office manager.
Yeah, but I can't pre-qualify her.
I didn't say that. I'm just saying.
Reapplied for the.
Exactly. I mean, it would have, you'd have to see if you'd even be interested in that. I'm not saying.
Right.
You know, just hire her off the bat, but I'm saying. You'd make a good candidate, I believe.
So I think with the workforce, I think hopefully there'd be, cause we get, we're getting a lot younger retirees down in the area. That maybe somebody there would wanna pick up some extra hours. And even if, even if you split a full-time person into two part-time people. Might be a potential, or, or maybe they work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and somebody else works Thursday and Friday. Something like that might, might work out from a, a working standpoint for that fifty-five, fifty to sixty-year-old person. Cause there's a lot, I mean, even in our park, we have a lot of new fifty-five to sixty-age people that still need, or would not mind getting a little bit to have some play money with.
Todd, on your schedule, how does that work if the individual's off on a Saturday? What do we do?
It'd have to be covered by one of the other ones. They'd have to swap and trade or whatever.
If I hit the forty hours and I'm paying time and a half?
If, if something's covered and we had to be open, yeah. I mean, it's just like regular, just like if I gotta call somebody in at maintenance and you're paying time and a half for unscheduled things to cover.
Well, like I think, in my opinion again, and please correct me. I, I think there is enough workload out there now for two full-time people.
I agree.
I really do. We have just grown.
I'll do away with a part-time and get two full-time and allow them to work the extra hours. Or, or we'll determine who stays late and swap it back and forth or something like that between those two people. Who stays late or whether we were open, open a Saturday or.
Or just hire this, the new person as your split shift. They, they're, they're the, the come-in later, stay-later person. That's the, the schedule that they're being hired for. And, you know, just do it that way. I mean.
I, I tried to do this with just two full-time people. It don't work. And I, I couldn't make it work to where I, I, you know, I, I looked at it as whether I would want it to be able to do that. And it was just too grueling of a schedule and, and too up and down to make it work. That's why I added the other part-time in.
You need to have that.
And then that made it more realistic and, and more reasonable.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, let's just, just for looking at the schedule. So say we go with two full-time people and a part-time person, what is that going to do to the budget? We're not going to be looking at any assessment increases, right? I hope not.
Be adding a full-time person.
Yeah.
Plus the benefits.
Yeah, for that full-time person. I mean, I don't know if it's going to affect the assessments. I can tell you it's going to be an add, of course. It's an increase. We, we. It's whether or not, you know, some of the other savings will offset it. Um, I think what we need to do is, is talk about what we want. I'll throw it into the budget scenario. We'll get the real numbers and then we'll see what that means. I don't know what, what you're thinking about for a salary, beginning salary for this full-time person, because I don't know.
Well, let's just go the minimum wage before right now is fifteen.
Yeah.
So even if we kicked it to your suggestion of what sixteen fifty, let's base it on sixteen fifty plus, uh, benefits.
Uh, with a part-time person, do we pay their full benefits?
No, we don't pay any benefits.
Time doesn't even.
People like a morning person and an afternoon person, you could save some money from the insurance aspect, right?
True.
If we did what? I'm sorry.
If you did a morning person and an afternoon part-time person, you would save from having to pay the health insurance.
Correct.
That's what my second one here was, and that's why I say you just, it, it works. You just don't get the double coverage.
Right.
Well, sixteen, sixteen fifty is thirty, basically thirty-five thousand a year plus benefits on a full-time job.
And I mean, I don't mind the idea of two halftime people, but when I try to look at the training that's going to have to be done, boy, that just scares me. To make sure that two people are trained, uh, of all aspects of those positions.
Yes, I agree.
Depending on how soon you would hire somebody, as you could have the two half, since you would still have Joyce, you could do the training with the two half-timers at the same time and cover it and kill two birds with one stone.
So you got to remember TJ is going to retire here someday soon too.
Right.
So you need records keeping, training and all that. I, I think you need two full-time people minimum.
I think we do too.
You do.
Well, if you have two full-time people, then you've got the coverage when, at such time that TJ would, would retire.
Right.
And you wouldn't have the, the big training curve then.
Right.
No, 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 no. This is in addition to.
This is just for running the office.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is two full-time positions at sixteen fifty.
Well, no, T, oh.
Well, I'm sorry, TJ is going to have her annual salary or whatever it is now. And then the second person will be sixteen fifty based on that with the, uh, health insurance. Uh, I still like having the halftime person in there, really do. And that can be a seasonal or off-season.
Seasonal would be, would be great. I don't think they're needed off-season. I think they're needed from, uh, September through, uh, April.
If we're going to throw out a, what are we throwing out now? A full, two, two more full-time? So we'll have three full-time.
Would be the one full-time.
Okay.
Hire a second full-time, plus a part-time seasonal.
Okay. Then can we hire that second full-time person to not be just a window assistant, but somebody with an, a finance or business, um, office? So it won't be the sixteen fifty an hour.
That's why, that's why I said it would actually be a good choice.
I know.
What, so what are you thinking it's going to be?
So, um. I'm thinking it's got to be about twenty-one fifty to twenty-two dollars an hour.
So you're up around the, the forty to forty-two thousand.
Yes, yes. If you're going to get somebody with the true office experience, it's got like some accounts payable, accounts receivable.
And to me, that's basically what we're looking for.
Yes, you know.
Is a long range.
Right. So if we brought somebody in, you know, you're right, mid-forties to, you know, forty-seven if the most.
And I would work this as a salary position.
And have that person come in and, and there's some things they can take off me as well. And then a part-time person that could use the window. Can do the window and.
We're already booked in for the part-time.
And, and support us when we need things photocopied or invoices pulled because we're working on something or, um, you know, that kind of stuff. Um, so that the only increase in the budget would be the forty.
One full-time person.
Now, let me see.
If you're only going to do the other one seasonal, it wouldn't even be a full increase because.
Well, we've already got that one budget seasonally. So the only increase is, I'm trying to find too many pieces of paper. So I said, um, we should have enough money in savings from just the spectrum contract alone to pay that salary. Because I'm bringing the spectrum contract on mid-budget season. And it's already affecting, it's saving us about, oh, about forty-seven thousand dollars a year in this budget season. You're going to have a full year of that reduced spectrum contract next year. The difference between what we would have paid this year had we not renewed the contract and what we're going to pay next year would be enough to pay that salary.
So you still have money left over on your spectrum contract for the rest of the year.
That's what's in that new projection is the new contract rate effective, I think I said April first or May first, I think it was April first. I dropped it down from seven hundred and seven down to six hundred and sixty for the remainder of this fiscal year. That's just this year. Next year, you're going to have a whole year's worth of that savings. There'll be enough of a savings in that contract alone to pay the salary of this additional full-time person with benefits.
Need to do a hundred percent medical?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what's being offered all the way. That's another discussion.
That's a discussion for the, for another budget time, but the decision whether or not to hire another, hire a full-time person in addition to replacing Joyce. And how are we going to pay for that? I think we can pay for that.
But one thing I do want to say is I want to thank Joyce for giving us three months. Just to cover this if, if, if that's the way we're going to go.
I agree. I agree.
So getting back to this, we, uh, are agreeing to two full-time and one part-time seasonal. And then you'll include that on the next meetings for the operational budget.
Yep.
And I will start writing up physician descriptions and performance evaluations and blah, blah, blah.
The one, the one FTE is going to be TJ and then we're going to hire a new, a new, new full-time. And a part-time seasonal, September through April.
Yeah. Is that what we're all agreeing to?
Yes.
I mean, there was a lot of good suggestions in from where everybody put it. I, I thank you.
So what did we just, we, we've decided on the position hiring? Did we decide on the office hours?
No, I thought we were looking at.
Pretty much with what Todd.
Okay, that's what I wanted to just double check.
That that part-timer would be off on Monday and we'll work Tuesday through Saturday.
Okay.
And just be a standard eight to twelve. I like the.
And then, then possibly even if, since it's a seasonal person, maybe they don't open every Saturday in the summer. Maybe it's every other Saturday.
No, no, it's, it's a seasonal position.
During, during seasons when they would be here every, every Saturday, but during the summer whenever.
They're not.
Exactly, then we don't.
So the, the Saturdays, we wouldn't have office hours on Saturday. For the summer.
Correct. All, all through the summer, okay.
Yeah.
Right.
And you're talking about the seven to three thirty?
Well, what I, the actual office hours I put in was eight to six. So they got, there's an hour in the morning in there for the record-keeping and that.
Those are window hours, not.
Yeah, the window.
The window opens at eight.
But the office, the actual schedule would be, you know, seven to three thirty and then the, the other full-time would start at nine thirty to six.
Oh, the part-time person.
I, I don't, I don't know how it'll work with a full-time person, another full-time person in there. But one hour is not enough for TJ to get the stuff done after Saturday night dances and, and that sort of stuff, all the things she has to do.
I agree.
Okay.
But you've got double, she's got the rest of the day from nine thirty to six or nine thirty to three thirty where she's doubled up.
Doesn't have to be done right that minute too. Those deposits can wait just a little bit. I mean, it doesn't have to be done like.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I disagree with that. For security reasons, I don't want people at the window and TJ having money spread across her counter while she's trying to count it. And them at the window seeing how much cash is in the office or how much cash is not in the office.
Well, that might be a whole other.
Security issue.
That's probably a whole nother discussion too, where that maybe shouldn't even be happening right here. It should happen in another area or whatever, so.
That, that, I.
Security again here a little bit.
Yeah, I can, I can change that procedure. Okay, one more time. TJ will stay seven to three.
Three thirty. Seven to three thirty.
Well, that's her half-hour lunch.
Take a half-hour lunch, yeah.
Uh, the second full-time would be nine thirty to six. The part-time seasonal would be what do you have? Eight to twelve and. Monday soft and Saturday soft.
This one.
This, this could, this could also be tweaked, okay?
Tuesday through Saturday.
Okay. I mean, this can be tweaked a lot because you could even have the full-time, two full-time people rotating back and forth. You'd have them both in here at seven to three thirty and then let the, the part-time person take the late shift one week. I mean,
It's an option.
However, whoever's managing the office, okay, which would be the one right here right now. Can allow them to work on the own, their own schedule, whatever works with them to be pretty flexible.
Right.
Okay. So this week they're doing this, next week they're doing that, whatever. As long as it's something that's reasonable for everybody and everybody's getting their hours in.
Long as the windows open consistently.
And the windows covered consistently.
Right.
Um, it really doesn't matter what hours they're working or who's working which ones.
From my experience at the bank, trying to shuffle folks around in different hours didn't work well.
Didn't work.
You hire them and you say, the, your, the position is Tuesday through Saturday from eight to twelve period. That's it.
Yep.
The position is Monday through Friday, nine thirty to six. That's it. Not shuffling them around because then you get, you're right, we ran into issues and at the bank it was just, you clearly said this was the hours you're getting hired for. You want to work, if you don't, we'll go somebody, we'll hire somebody else. You know, so.
That's fine. I can see that.
Okay.
Okay, so what the hell did I just decide on?
I think, I think we went, we went with, we're going with this one. The part-time is seasonal. We're hiring a full-time. And we'll just rock with those hours. That's what I was going to put in the minutes anyway.
I like it.
Like, we rocking with this?
Yep. And everybody agree? But again, thank you guys for submitting your information. It was good. I, you know.
So are we going to?
Still surprised that other parks.
Yeah, I was quite surprised as I looked at every one of them. Um, so are we going to work, you're going to just work on job descriptions and, and placing ads and?
Yeah.
And.
You're just going to give me the budget projection.
Okay, all right.
So we just made ourselves stand out from twelve other parks.
Yeah, we did.
And we're better.
We, we need to be, we need to be the park that everybody looks at, not the, not the ones looking at you.
I agree, I agree.
Hey, Dwayne.
Yes, sir.
Would you ever consider posting the jobs in the Tribune or in the park before you bother going to Indeed or anything?
Uh, I don't want to limit it to the park. You, you guys can certainly hit me with it, but I would prefer to go out and just look.
Yeah, just curious.
The broader, the broader advertisement to me, the better the people I'm going to get.
I agree.
That hasn't happened with the park manager, but.
Oh, are we going to, we going to redo Florida District? Put you back on their page?
Uh, this year, yes. Uh, that's another topic that I will probably let, because there's an increase in the Florida special districts because we won't be getting the fifteen percent discount. Uh, that's a fee that's going to have to be included in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. And I, I have my thoughts on that, but I can't, I can't discuss that yet.
We'll make a decision whether it's worth the money once we do the budget.
Okay. We done?
Well, we're done with half of that.
Yeah, with, with the office hours, we're pretty much.
Yeah.
Well, we, we've answered my question on, uh, the office hours and, uh, the office assistant retirement. Uh, I have time to work on setting up a retirement party. But the part I wanted to combine was to see if we're going to go to a full-time or if we're going to stay with part-time. And you guys have pretty well made my mind up for that. Okay, now that's got beat up. Uh, the next one is the Board of Trustees' position descriptions. And I had asked everybody to submit, that, submit me their position description to see how we could improve. Or add subtractations, uh, to, to see how we can improve our park. And I received the South. Who's this? Who's this?
That's me. There should be two pages for me.
Got Russell's. We got seasonal.
Oh, right here. Right there with that clip on it.
So Sandy, you want to think?
I did not give you one either.
Well, I, I knew yours was pretty well developed on what we're already doing. I did, I couldn't see anything else other than we've already made the changes of, uh, the hurricane status and that, which we've already discussed in previous. Uh, Sandy, can I have it by next board meeting, please?
I got all excited and went through the park manager job description and highlighted all the things he's going to take from me. Oh, well.
Here's mine. Take one and pass it down. Somehow mine got omitted from the agenda. I sent them that way. Uh, somehow mine got omitted from the, from the, uh, agenda.
Okay.
So just attack these one at a time, Dwayne?
Uh, yeah, let's, Mary, yours was just one page, right?
No, mine's two pages. It's two pages.
Sorry.
Go, go with the north and the south.
Oh, here it is. I got it, I got it.
It's on, it's, it's the way it's printed, it's on.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Let's start off there since I have it in my hand.
Okay.
So the bold underline were things that I do that weren't in the original job description that's in the red book. And then I crossed off some things that don't apply anymore or just are basically already referred to in another one that need to be repeated, so.
So you're still, you're still staying with the annual preparation of the district's budget and the presentation, annual budget to, uh, to all property owners?
Until we find somebody that can take it away from me. Yep.
And even when we get a park manager that will quote-unquote take over these duties, I would still like to see Mary overseeing it.
Oh, yeah, well.
Cause I don't know, when, when they hand me a, uh, you know, the paperwork, their numbers and if they say, okay, I don't get it. You do.
Oh, believe me, whatever.
Responsible overseeing.
If the park manager gives me, gives us all a budget to review, we, I will be looking at all of those numbers as the treasurer for a hundred percent, making sure I'm, um, yeah, absolutely. That's a given. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because that park manager works for the Board of Trustees, not vice versa.
And I would expect I'm going to be involved in, in assisting him or her in that anyway, so.
Didn't that write up a position description for the park manager? Well, thank goodness.
That's the one, that's why I said I got all excited and went through with the highlighter and highlighted all the.
I need a vacation.
Okay.
It's not, it's not on today's agenda, but you sent that, tells me we're all supposed to respond.
Good, good.
So what'd you say about the highlighted stuff on here, Mary?
The, the bold and underline is adjustments I made to the one that's in the red book.
And then the, the strikeouts.
Strikeouts are, don't, don't apply anymore or.
So if, if, if everybody's in agreement, I can make these changes to, to the official PP one D. And, uh, and follow this and bring it. And bring it back at the next board meeting. Now, now, or do you want to workshop them one more time?
More than likely, we're going to have to workshop them one more, but I, I did have a question on item eight. Uh, it's deep out, deposit all the funds. Who? How is that going to happen if you're just completing the bank deposits when needed?
Deposit all funds transferred from the district office.
That'll be scratched off.
Right, that doesn't.
So. When she's here, if she's needed, if TJ needs help, but.
It's what I do today. I drive the bank deposits to the bank in my car when we do deposits.
Okay, who, who's going to do that now? If it's not here as a backup. It's one of the other employees.
Yeah.
Want to do that.
If I'm unable to do it. Like in the summer when I'm not here, um. Joyce used to do it sometimes. Um, Russell's done it for me once because I had a conflict and couldn't do it. Um. Any, any trustee can do it, okay? It doesn't, but it's normally when I'm here, it's me. Which is another.
Really?
You know, there are some of those deposits that I'm not very comfortable with.
And that was the only questions I had was just a clarification on what that really was. Well, the rest of it, I don't have a problem at all.
Now, but you looked into Regions Bank on picking up money and stuff like that.
We can get a company to pick up our deposits. There's a fee for it, though. Um, uh, and, and deliver them to the bank for us, so we're not. But one, if, if we can get to the point where we're only accepting credit card or check. Then, then. That risk is lower than it is today.
All right, all right.
Okay, anything else with, uh, Mary's position?
One, one thing that I had that's on mine was, like, like I said, that simple city that's on, it states on mine, that's the old insurance, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mary's the one that's been dealing with the insurance companies. I mean, I, I'll assist with that, but.
Yeah.
So that really should probably be added to yours.
And, and, well, the only reason it was in yours also is if the treasurer was up in. Maine.
Yeah.
Uh, and we had a disaster here. You, the maintenance individual had access to, at that time, FMIT, and you could get in and say, hey, John Doe.
I think, I think. The, the two positions need to work together because you've got the building and all. But. Insurance is one of those things that doesn't have to be done. By the treasurer, okay?
Right.
You know, if we had one trustee that was responsible for understanding insurance and understanding what insurance coverage we have and. Maybe except for the medical, but, um, that doesn't have to be with me. I don't know anything about property and liability insurance. I've had to learn it. Um, and we have a fantastic agent right now in Brent that's covering all of our insurance. Needs and, um, you know, he, he could, uh. Help whoever that person is that's in charge of insurance, making sure we're properly insured and we're. You know, listing our property accurately, which is what I was going to give to the park manager to do to make sure that all of our property is covered, it's adequately insured, all that stuff. And even with the medical insurance, you know, I had, I had brought to the board a while back, uh, having an, an agent, Ricky Topper.
Yeah.
Who is an independent agent who doesn't, wouldn't make a penny off us, so she's got no contractual obligations to us. All she would do every year. Is go out into the marketplace and look for all the medical plans out there and recommend. If we wanted to change our medical plan, what was available to us and what it would cost. And do everything that I do, she was going to do for me. So, and, you know, insurance can be. It doesn't have to be with the treasurer if that, if we're looking for other places to put other things. Okay.
I have mine next in my hand. Uh, the only thing I changed on the, uh, first, first one, there was presided all board meetings and then. Informed the first and second vice of any of my absences that was not specified in there. And then under item two is, uh, all the. Duties outlined in all of our bylaws, articles. And then I just wanted to put in there, uh. To remind the chair, whoever he, she may be, to make those appointments of the kitchen manager, doc manager, media, treasurer, barn, webmaster.
There's a, there's another, there's another committee you've missed, um. I can't think of what it's called. Enforcement, the enforcement.
Oh, the fines and violations or whatever.
Yeah, what, what are they called? What are they called? Help.
The enforcement, I don't want to call it formal.
No.
They've got, they've got. It was a finding.
They've got.
Hearing or something like that.
They've got a number in here.
And I, I thought Doc Master was under the, or, or under the, uh, maintenance. Well.
Well, this is just committee.
That's one of the appointments that the chair makes.
Okay, I, I just thought that was on, I thought that was under that, too, but I guess not.
Uh, it's official paperwork stuff. No, it's not where I thought it was.
Charter.
It's somewhere around PP eleven. I went to, that's high. Auditor selection committee. That's only as needed, so they don't have to be appointed every year. Enforcement committee. That's what they're called officially. They're an enforcement committee and they need to be seated.
Yep.
So that they're ready. When needed.
I will make those changes.
Yeah.
Pardon?
I will make those changes.
Well, all right, now. We're stepping on each other's toes. I thought that, the, the plan was. When we got through Mary's, I would make the changes to PP one D officially on our. And I would bring it back at the next workshop. Now you're saying you're going to do this, but I'm thinking I'm scribing and I'm going to do this.
No, you're going to do it. I'm going to go back in and add this to my.
To your list, okay.
Process and I'm going to shoot it to you and then you can make it pretty.
Um, no need.
No need?
Nope. I can pick up what changed and just pick up the P, the official PP one D and make the changes that you've identified.
Okay, then the only other change I made was down here is, uh, appoint committees as.
Yeah, I got that. That's on the line.
So one.
Good.
Okay, yeah, I, I got that. We'll get one, you'll get one more bite of the apple before it comes back to a board meeting for voting on. So you'll have a chance to look at it. Um. I'll try to get these done as quickly as possible, get them to TJ and maybe she can get the copies out to everybody. Ahead of the agenda so they can start looking at it, make sure I didn't typo stuff.
Okay, and next one I have is yours.
Oh, okay. Well, I just did mine the way that, that I'm used to doing revisions, um. I, it just, there's so much of mine that really isn't what I'm doing. Um, and stuff, and so I just basically replaced. The draft of what's there and. Then what I, what I'm proposing, scratching out what, what I think needs to go away, because there's a lot of. Um, like, like under number three, maintain, uh, the district office of one volume, complete and current set of rules and regulations. TJ does that, I don't. I know she does it, but I don't know where, I probably could find it, but. That's not what I really do every day. That's not even in my wheelhouse. That's, that's TJ. TJ takes care of that. So I removed a lot of the stuff that. Um, you know, because it said work with as needed with the office manager, but I'm really not needed on any of those things.
You don't post anything on bulletin.
She does the posting of the minutes out there on the bulletin boards.
And Bill does.
And Bill does, uh, does down at the post office, so I'm not even directly involved in that and haven't been probably since I started. Um.
That's what's good about this. That's what's good about this exercise, making sure that, that these descriptions accurately reflect what we're doing today.
So that was just what I was proposing, my, what I thought it should be. Um, you know, I did, I did do the number two, maintaining the electronic files. Because I am pretty proactive with the electronic filing of. And TJ has asked and we're going to be working together soon, I hope, be able to, um. Get more data stored electronically. To cover public records as opposed to paper. And so the current electronic file will become more of a mishmash, what she has, what I have. Marrying together, but right now it's very separate. She keeps a paper copy. I make sure she always has a paper copy of everything that I've done electronically. Um, so that's, that's why that's still there. Um.
You're reducing it from this to that.
No, no.
The way around.
This is, this is what it was.
Oh, okay.
Oh, wait.
No.
Yeah, right. You're right. This is what it looks like after I clean it up. Yep, sorry. Yep, so that's what the draft of, the draft is what it would look like when it's done with all the, what I've scratched off. So for my next meeting, all I have to do is remove draft to six.
Okay.
Um, unless anybody sees anything else.
What about maintaining the website stuff? You're the one doing that, correct?
There's a, there's a problem there.
Okay.
I'm assigned as the webmaster at the beginning of the year per the chairman, and that's the webmaster's duties.
That's what I'm asking, whether that's part of this position.
Doesn't have to be married to the, to the secretary.
That's what I'm asking.
Right, it doesn't have to be married to the secretary. It just happens to be right now, but it.
It's just like the Doc Master with myself.
Down, down the road a piece.
That's what I wanted to find out for sure.
Yep, so that's why it's not listed here is because they're really not married together.
Perfect.
Okay. All right, who's next?
I know it's kind of hard.
You know, I've always been about saving paper, but this front and back stuff is just.
I ended up refotoing things when I was preparing for today's meeting, so I didn't have some things on back to back.
I have to admit. That I have to reprint the entire thing.
Yeah.
Because I do my flag, because I have to be able to keep up with y'all while we're doing things.
Yeah.
And so I have to be able to speed to the paper and while I like, like saving a treat. Workshops are, are terrible front and back.
I'll change that. Uh. Louis, I have yours.
This is.
And I, I.
This is Louis.
Yeah, it, it didn't, uh. It has some comments, but I don't think.
Okay, I missed the mark a little bit. I was, as you were looking for it, and I'd be happy to furnish that for the next meeting, next workshop, but. The one comment I would really like to make is it doesn't, our description doesn't mention anything about doing the business of the board. The single biggest thing we do is make policy and all ours talks about is handling complaints.
Good point.
Thirty-five minutes, there's, how many? Maybe thirty-five meetings this year and there's no mention of it in our job description. I don't, I.
And that's.
Find that borderline offensive, Frank.
He makes a good point.
So, so I will, I'd like to, I'd like to come back to the meeting, the next meeting with the more, you know, with the actual description rewritten.
It's a very good point.
You know, I saw you and everybody could include that as one.
Everybody's just.
Everybody's assigned checks as needed. The very first item on everybody's could be, somebody come up with the verbiage. Duane, feed me the verbiage. I'll put it on the top. Everybody's.
And, and I think it should be that you have to attend X percentage of the meetings either in person or through Zoom.
So.
Um, so it's a requirement.
Yeah. The other, the other comment before I. Specifically write it is I think ours is. Potentially going to be highly influenced by the park manager because. And, and I think the one thing I took from the, the interviews is it, it's a little dependent upon who that person is. I mean. I think it was pretty clear that, at least I had the feeling that some of the candidates would have taken a lot of the complaints off of our desk and some of them wouldn't have taken as much. And, and I, I think I can see what you're going to say is they're going to do what we tell them to do.
You betcha.
Right.
But.
So start out with an accurate. Description of what you're doing today so that we can decide what we can take off that and.
And I'm sorry, Duane, I didn't, I interpreted the assignment a little bit.
We did together.
I was just trying to send you way over the wall.
The, the good thing, though, I see with us, um, our major thing is equalizing. The amount of, um, facilities that we wa- watch over or we, we go to. So, along with what Lou said, that I didn't really think anything towards that. But I think, uh, for us changing, um, adding to the north side. So Lou's not, uh, burdened with the whole south side. It doesn't necessarily have to change our names. Do we just change the streets? Uh, because that does say that in there, in there.
It's in the job description.
Yeah, it's in the job description.
Right, so we need to fix that in the job.
With, with, what you're going to see then is, uh, under the south trustee, it is going to cover. Points A from.
Yep.
That direction and the north is going to include. India.
Wait, is it, is it reasonable for me to ask that you could feed your revised version to me by? Uh, Friday?
Yes.
So that I could get it in the same format so we have identical matching when we come into the next workshop?
Yep.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
And Russell, I think you'd do the same.
Yep.
Just include that.
Yep.
Otherwise, I think they, they are pretty well described.
We have to boil ours down in the public meeting. I mean, I, it's, is that a sunshine problem? It'd be great one between us?
Because it is just the same thing.
No, because it's going to come to a vote.
It's a voteable item.
All right, okay.
So, so you guys.
Got to do it separate and then.
Yeah.
We'll call it a year. Meld them together.
Okay, well, you can, you can meld them together.
Yeah, I can meld them together. I can't give an opinion on it. I can just scribe what you say, what Russell says, scribe it.
Okay.
And then. Bring it to the board meeting and then I, and then I can have an opinion at the board.
A lot of lines through everything.
Show up as what we're supposed to.
We're just going to put lines through everything.
Okay, um.
Seasonal and.
Seasonal.
Before we begin, Louis, I have to say something, and this is what I was going to say in the beginning, but I didn't. Your last sentence in your opening paragraph. It is hard for me to ignore that in the last election, we only had two people that weren't incumbents run for five available seats.
Mm-hmm.
As I listen to all of us talk about our job descriptions, something kind of has been weighing on me. We're all unpaid employees of this district, so look how much work we're doing. And I'm listening, I'm looking at Laurie's and all of us.
Mm-hmm.
Thinking. This is why we have very few people running for the board.
Yes, exactly.
And this is true, and I know that I see all of you in the office all the time, because I'm in the office all the time. And I'm thinking, are we putting too much? On what we're doing? I mean, have we gotten to the point where? Where, we're doing so much that. We don't have time to enjoy. Anything. And it's beginning to be like, you know, it, it takes, um, Wise Person told me when I got on the board. It takes one year to learn to have the courage to speak up in a meeting.
Oops.
And, 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 and that was my sense of. And one year to start making changes and then you're gone if you don't run again. Or you don't get elected again. And I look at all of these jobs and we're so engrossed in our job, we forget that we're also. Trustees of the district. I mean, we, we run this place. And I realize that we're going to hire another full-time office staff and hopefully we're going to hire a park manager one day. But. When we look at our jobs, are we doing too much? And how can we, I know we can't even work out, I know, it's impossible. Because we all do way too much than we should do because we want to make this place better. But is there any way that we can have a discussion about? Make, make it not so hard on. Because you know.
Pay me.
But you know, but.
If you look at the definition of a board trustee or a board position, it is to set policy, to make policy. It's never to do everything that we're doing.
And when I saw Louis' statement, it just kind of hit home. I went, oh my, I mean.
It. We're, we're.
When, when we were, when Laurie and I were, uh, fire commissioners, uh, because we're a volunteer fire department.
Right.
A lot of running the fire department was done by the commissioners. And we were warned on so many occasions by our district council. That we are not supposed to be doing the work we're doing. We're supposed to be policymakers, but there was nobody else to do it.
And.
It's so true.
And, and she was, you know, concerned about the roles that we were taking on and. Because that's not what we're supposed to be doing. And, um, and I remember that conversation where, that we had with her, um, about that. And, and, you know, so that, that statement just kind of, it, all of a sudden I had Maggie's discussion in my head that she had with us, um.
But like, I want to make mentions, uh, I, I don't know how long I've been on the board, but I do want to compliment this board. That has actually gone and taken upon themselves to improve. that has actually gone and taken upon themselves to improve the park by doing what you're doing, looking into all these issues. Because if you go back to nineteen fifty-five, when the park was established. I don't think any of those major problems were ever tackled the way we have tackled the marina, this place here. I think this board is exceptional. I don't know about the rest of the park on what they think. I, I just think that we, uh, have done an exceptional job and thank you all.
Well, you know, I, I looked up some things because there's some things and I was uncomfortable with doing and, and I looked up in the R, R and R. And in there it says that a trustee can ask the chairman to appoint a committee. If the chairman doesn't appoint a committee, a trustee can appoint a committee that they're the chairman of. So in, in a lot of cases, I think, uh, uh, at least I go in one situation with my current definition. Would be where I would want to appoint a committee that I was chairman of that could do some of the grunt work that I wasn't comfortable with.
Mm-hmm. And that has been done before.
Yeah. And I'm.
Yeah.
I didn't know. I thought it was just volunteers.
Cause I mean.
Meet with volunteers.
No, no.
In my case, I'm not real comfortable with looking up the dances. But I'm sure there are some people that attend the dances and know the music. That would be happy to do the research to find the bands that would be good for us and do the pricing in that. Which would take some of the load off of, of my inexperience to do some things like Louis said. To do the policy, to look more seriously at the policy. Cause right now I'm burning rubber trying, working on, on the summer stuff.
You're absolutely right. The, uh, rules and regulations do stipulate that he was a trustee can propose that to the chair and, you know, if not. And we've done it before just for the people that were, uh, the maintenance trustee, I think was the other one is, uh. She left and went out and that person nominated another person or a committee to take care of his, his, her job while he was gone.
And, and the beauty of that is that trustee committee cannot authorize the expenditure of any funds.
Correct.
It has to come back to the board for the authorization of the expenditures.
And you just want to be very careful with the sunshine.
I was going to say with sun, the sunshine law, if it's an official committee, if I understand correctly, and I could be wrong. If it's an official committee, you have to have agendas on the website a week in advance. You have to do minutes and they become public record. Okay. You've got a lot of responsibilities. If you do a volunteer, like Treasure Barn has to have their agendas on and.
Right.
It's not the same thing.
If you have a, a group of volunteers that you meet with these volunteers and you guys figure out what you're doing and you make assignments and stuff. That's your business with the volunteers.
Right.
And then you come back to the board if you need money or want.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I don't see that with.
Kathy shaking her head, no.
I, I don't think it's the same as a standing committee.
It's not.
It's not the same.
It's not.
It's not because for seasonal rec.
Standing committees have to follow the same rules as.
There are several committees on the board.
Correct. But if Rod wants to appoint a committee, they don't have to do all those advertisements. The only thing he has to do is make sure that they don't expend any funds and it has to come back to the board for approval.
So why is that any different than Rod having a group of volunteers?
It isn't.
It is. It is just, it's just in the rules and regs that says committee.
To make it official, I, to make it on the up and up, I would need to come to Dwayne and ask if I could do it. If he said no, then I could do it and it notifies the board as to what's going on. So they're aware if they get some flashback from, feedback from people that says, hey, what the heck's that guy doing? He hadn't got the authority to do that.
Yeah.
I, when I read that, I basically, all I saw was it said, you can ask people to help you if you need help.
Yeah, basically.
That's what I saw.
What it is.
Yeah. And makes no sense to ask the chair and he says no and go ahead and.
And do it anyway.
I'm not doing it anyway.
Okay.
Oh, all right.
We beat up the devil. Kathy, seasonal.
One thing I did is that I just, um, just listed all the stuff that I currently do. Um, I did remove the volunteer appreciation because it's always been an issue with funding. Um, but it's just all the things that I do every time. And there's a lot more emphasis on publicizing events, um, the financial part of it, you know, doing all the contracts, making sure they're filed correctly. Uh, making sure that I give to office manager the check requests and all of that. Just a little bit more expanded about what happens during season.
So, so the thought is this replaces what's in the book right now? So what's in the book trash and just like almost copy and paste this in one, two, three, four. Okay.
All of this is just like an itemized list of all the things that you have to do.
Right.
During season.
Instead of what's in our book, it's pretty vague.
Uh, the, the book is pretty vague about everything. This is all the, all the things you have to do, all the contracts, um. If you have a contract to sign, it was an artificial, doing all the check requests, publicizing all the events.
Right.
Um, you know, and also it's all the budgeting that we have to do. Now, a big part of our job is to do the budgeting, all the room and all the room reservation.
And I'm still waiting for budgets, by the way.
Is it?
Thank you.
Fishing a budget.
I got yours.
What Kathy is suggesting here is it's throwing a heck of a lot of work on her plate. Cause I mean, taking over every, basically all the things that have pretty much been, been defined as a split between continuing and.
Well, that's not, what, the first page is what I do now. This is what I do from seasonal season.
Yeah.
But then I didn't know if we wanted to push the envelope about looking at the long range view.
The page, well.
Um.
Is this the page you're missing? Yep.
There, there were two pages. One was, was what I do now, which is.
Right.
This is called job duties in the.
And the other one is the, to propose if we were going to make changes.
Changing.
Um, because I really do think that recreation, since we are a park and rec district, recreation, I've always thought. Having one budget. If you look at the recreation budget as a, as a year-long thing, maybe even have, just have two rec trustees instead of having seasonal ones continuing. Have two, two just rec trustees. Because, and, but it's, but it's one pot of money. If you look at the entire rec calendar for 12 months, but the one thing that I learned from doing rec in the summertime is that the summertime folks. They're really the children of the stick for years. And we should fund those activities.
Hmm.
And we're not. We didn't fund them last year. We should fund them.
Fund, I'm sorry.
We, we should fund the summertime activities instead of going out and asking the clubs to support them.
Could that be what we use the fifty-fifty monies for?
We could do that. We could also.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying we budget for it.
For it.
I mean, because it would be a fluctuating, now you said fifteen hundred, uh, basically from the fifty-fifty. You might not get that.
You're absolutely right. But I, I think that. We all pay an assessment fee. We all pay for it. But yet there's so much emphasis on seasonal rec and very little on summertime. I don't understand that. I never did. I mean, last year was just a thing where it just opened the door to have, we should have year-round and year-round rec.
Cause there's eight hundred snowbirds and four hundred full-time residents.
Doesn't make any difference.
Yeah, but that's why.
But, 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 but we matter. But we matter.
Summer, the, the summertime people matter too.
We matter. And I, I think if, if you look at, I know all four of you who can agree with this. The attendance last year's, last summer's activities was amazing.
Mm-hmm.
The cookouts, the, yeah, they were smaller, but there's a smaller group of people here. That's why we did movies during the summer. May have had a smaller group, but they enjoyed it. And so we should look at rec as a full-time, as full-time gig.
Could we have a recreation trustee and a, I don't know what you want to call it, an activities trustee? And that person does the potlucks and, cause that's not entertainment and recreation. That's just an activity, a social activity. So social activities versus recreation and entertainment. And then kind of split the duties that way. So that all the bands and all the showtimes and all of the events are one person. And the, and the coffee breaks and the guest speakers that come or the potlucks or that aren't involving contracts and hiring of somebody. They're just activities could be done by, and that, and I mean, we could even, the, the, the effect, all of the residents, the health fair could be under that person's. The, um, I don't know. We can think about what that would be for a division, but you've got your entertainment and, um, and, and recreation. And then you have your activities.
I mean, I think that would be a good, good idea because I mean, you look at, at what you say, the potluck, the coffee breaks, maybe even the movies under that person. Or that could still go that way. Cause the, the movies is of course not that big a, big a issue or bigger part of a problem to do. But then when you look at that, those three duties aren't very darn much for a trustee to be doing. It's not doing their share. So at that point, like I suggested in, in one line is that we talked about the twelve hundred plus units in the park with the, uh, PR trustees to make the work a little lighter, then split it into thirds.
But, but what's, what's being done today and what could be done?
Could be done.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
If you, if that was, you know, you could do a lot more than has been done historically, if that's your, your, your thing.
And you have to keep and remember the public relations person, uh, generally you have to be here year-round.
Yeah.
So we're also looking at, uh, if you're reoccurring rec or seasonal rec, um, if one person's gone. You know, I mean, or both people are gone. You know, that's, that's, now you're tied to a job that you have to be here. Yeah, we're very fortunate in that we have that many that are seasonal that have those responsibilities.
I, I think.
Really lucky. That ain't going to happen all the time. No.
But I think there's a.
You hope not, right?
I don't, you know, I've never done a complete study of the demographics of the park. I sense there's a pretty, pretty steady shift of more year-round residents. I, I would suspect.
Mm-hmm.
I think in the last, I think in the last five years, I'll, I'll bet it's doubled.
Yes.
So, and now look at the, the board, there's six, six of us are full-time. I don't think you had that before. I mean, they didn't used to have meetings in the summer.
Right.
That's true.
So it, you know, we went planning, planning ahead.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think we have to think down the road when we're making these decisions that, that I think that trend is going to continue.
Yeah. And, and now, if, if you had two rec trustees, then you could divvy up. You could say, okay, you, you do this one, I'll do that. You agree about what you're going to be doing. And you can actually split, because you could split it, you know.
Might even change over time because some of them has better.
Exactly. You may say, okay, you, for this month, do you mind covering this event and I'll do this event?
You mean, you wouldn't have to do like forty-five Saturdays in a row?
It's, but, and, and you may have different ideas. You may say, you know, I, and you could, I think if you had. The idea of having one rec budget and you get an idea that it's, it's shared. I know we have more people in the summer and it's winter. I get that. But you have to look at the summertime activity, just as close you do in the seasonal activities. And, and by changing this, changing the emphasis, you would get probably greater rec than you've ever had before. May think of different activity during the summer.
Well, you won't get one that's burned out, one that's not.
Something.
But just something different.
Instead of burning both people out.
Well, you know, there's one thing I personally think that we have somewhat neglected as a board. I know Todd works with it on a daily basis with, with a lot of planning and looking ahead to what he has to do. But he ends up doing a lot of firefighting too. That we're missing the boat by not having somebody that's responsible and, and working with a planning facet. Rather than an individual, the whole board doing it. Mary looks at the insurance and some of that and, and that stuff. We don't have a five-year plan, really. Where we've really looked at things that need to be done.
If you go on a website.
Down the road to look, so we don't get into the mess we got into with coming up with the funding for down here for the C-Wall. If we do something like that, I think a couple of things we could do is we could help keep the assessments to the residents lower by having some foreplanning on that and doing that. I mean, that's, in, in, when I was a systems analyst, I mean, that was part of my job is looking down the road as to, as to what needed to be done and, and do all that planning. It was, and I think we're really missing the boat by not looking forward at that long-term planning. Dwayne takes a big sigh.
Well.
Well, I'm sorry.
I, I, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, what you're all saying. Uh, I just want to go back to the charter. The charter says you're going to have five in one elected year and on the odd years and four in the even. When we get all of the position descriptions rewritten, then you're going to have to take a look at the organizational chart. Which then if we want to have one continuing rec or one, uh, would call it recreational activity person. Then that whole thing has to get changed, which is going to change anyway, if and when we ever get a park manager. That's not on there, but we can go through and change every one of these without having to do anything against the charter.
That's good. That's good.
So.
That's good.
It's going to be important. Uh, I don't know how long it's going to take everybody to rewrite or, or Lori to get that. And as soon as, um, Sandy gets it in, I think we can look at this next meeting. So we can really decide what we want to do.
I think this is a big deal.
It's, it's a big deal. It really is.
I don't think we need to rush. I think we need to do it right.
So, are, are we going to workshop this next time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Coming back in the workshop. So I need to know if I'm doing, I'm supposed to be doing Kathy's recommendation, okay? When I look at the new shorter version.
Yeah.
I don't see complete all the contracts for the dances. I don't see complete all the check requests. I don't see publicize.
Oh, I just, I just grouped it. So I just, it was just a, well, so do you want me to redo it and send it to you? And how do you want me to do it?
Just send me a bullet, a bullet list, one, two, three, four of the jobs. Okay?
If we were going to mush.
And you mush?
Cause this, cause this, this didn't really, your job description is not like this.
Kind of mush north and south PR trustee. Why can't we mush, mush? We're making stuff up now.
I know we are.
Um, why can't we mush recreation trustee?
Okay.
But I want to make sure, cause in, one of them you're saying, complete all the contracts for outside paid instructors and classes.
Oh, that, that was before, we don't have Sandy's. We don't have Sandy's. So I'll, I'll take that.
Then on the one that Lori was just talking, there, it's not included and this is all contracts for the dances. So it. They should.
Now, now we're all saying that. And I'll take out the class thing because that's.
Are we doing on time for Zoom?
No.
So do we need a north and a south trustee or just?
Public relations.
What I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay. Who, who did I miss? Rod.
Okay. I mean, I pretty well talked about them as far as do the, uh, potluck. And of course that doesn't take much work because the two ladies do all the work that, that put it together. And it's, it's just basically reserving the hall is all that is. Um, the, uh, materials for like getting cards and all that, I, that's not really a big duty to. The gal, the cards called me and says, I need these kinds of cards. So I tell Joyce and she orders them. No big deal because we got up to a five hundred dollar limit on it. Um, and I do the coffee breaks and I'm very, very comfortable with that because I've had a, do a lot, I've done a lot of things in the past on the, on getting those, those good programs. Um, I would be comfortable in doing the picnic type stuff, like the, the summer activities, the ice cream social, that kind of thing without any problem. The, the movies, um, for year-round, even the summer year-round would, would not be a problem. Um. The public relations trustee, I mean, that's, that we're pretty well settled. We got good guys doing that. And they like going out and telling people they're doing things wrong.
Sure.
So Kathy's.
And I, and I saw something in there of organizing a volunteer appreciation launch. I don't know if we've ever, or I don't.
We can't.
We can.
Can.
We cannot use district money for appreciation.
Yeah, we've always had cooks night out.
Right.
Yeah.
So that needs to be removed anyway.
I mean, basically if I, if I would move the summer dance situation off of my plate. I have relatively, and, and the reason I say that is, I mean, Kathy has the contacts. She's made the contact. She's went out and heard the bands. I couldn't tell you if a band was good or not. If I enjoyed it and could dance a little bit to it, I'd probably enjoy it, but, uh. I, that's one thing I personally am not comfortable with. That's not saying that somebody down the road wouldn't be comfortable with and it's like we talked, I could. Form a committee that would help me organize that or or look that stuff up too. So. I, I really see my duties as such as relatively simple in comparison to most of the others.
When, when we were talking about mushing the, I, I, I thought the list that Kathy was going to give me was, was for recreational trustees, the.
For both of them.
A and B.
Okay, so you want, you want input.
If I'm.
You want me to give you input, Lori, about what I see my responsibilities are and you'll get Kathy's and then you'll mush, mush them.
Well, I kind of sort of like, like this idea better. Kathy's getting ready to mush and can she mush in Rod's with it?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause you'll, you'll quickly.
But you can't.
Recognize what to do.
Can't talk to each other.
Cause I think.
Can't talk to each other, but.
Cause part of that's going to be also planning the year. So doing all the room reservation form, getting into Lori. So everything is planned out. So that we're not intersecting with each other.
Right.
Yeah. So does that mean Rod's going to be coming and orchestrating and operating the dances for you sometimes and you're going to vice versa?
Could be.
And if he goes to dance.
That'll be decided at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, I think we've covered everybody's um.
Yep.
And we've already gone over the boat and RV. I just lost my agenda. We've gone over the bingo pitch. We've gone over the boats, RVs.
Only two items.
Uh, we did the um, yeah, the fifty-fifty money, uh, park security.
That's the next one. Next.
Todd.
All right, well, there's been a few incidents in the park lately and I feel we need to discuss about park security. First thing that I've already started to do is uh, I've had the. Door kicks that lock the doors open. I've had those all removed off the doors. That way they can't block doors open anymore. Seems to be a pretty common incident anymore. Um, it'll also help with our air conditioning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you do that?
Mike, can't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, because why do you need them locked open?
Yeah.
It says you can't prop the door.
You're talking to door stop.
The door, the door stops on the bottom of the doors so that they don't, so they can't.
You can't prop that door open. If you get in, it's because you have a fob.
Make sure that we educate people not to take the umbrella rain thing and block the door open.
What I've seen already is, yeah, I've already seen that happen already and I stopped it once, all right.
Yeah.
And I watched that pretty close Saturday at the, at the bazaar.
That's exactly where I seen it.
Cause I was uh. Complaining that I, it was hard for me to wheel my stuff in, but you know.
Get somebody open.
The. Handicap button works out nice to get through the door and stay open long enough to get your stuff through.
Exactly.
So that's, that was not an issue at all with people carrying stuff in.
Not, not to rush everybody, but the Zoom time is getting close. So if you would.
All right, well, the next, next thing that I think needs to happen is the. At least the nighttime activities that are going on in the park, the fobs need to stop being disabled. Should have to be able to use your fob to get in the doors. Um, without going into details, we don't want people just barging in after hours. And into our events. Um, if you've got an event with uh. Out, you know, that allows outside people in, get another volunteer to man the doors. I don't think we should allow, allow the fobs to be disabled anymore.
Can I add something?
Yes, please.
Um. All of us, I won't get into, I won't get into what happened because there's been lots of rumors about the night that Atlantic City Boys was here. But unbeknownst to me, and I, I just never realized it, um, when we went to Showtime on Saturday nights. Um, they were still under the dance way of doing things. So the fobs were not armed. I just never thought about it. So all the doors were unarmed. A lot of people there that night. And so um, after that night of going through that, um. We decided, I said, no more, fobs are going to be armed. It is, the fobs were created for security for our residents, but we're not using them for that. No. And um, as somebody who's over those events, it was quite unnerving. Then that we had all, all the police presence in the park. So, no, no, not again. Now for the dances, what I did the Saturday night is that the, the, on the, the back of the hall, those two doors, the fobs were armed. On the one door in the parking lot, I always um, do the bar, so the bar is up. And I will ask people, again, I ask them every time they dance, don't let anybody in those doors. Because they can, you know, and and the one on the side, I, if it was a handicap door, they can use their fob and get in that way. So we're not letting everybody in who wants to get in. Down the dances, the two front doors, I cannot have the fobs to sit, no, they can't be armed because. I'd have somebody there opening the doors to everybody. So that's, that's the exception. But for movie nights, for Showtime. For Bingo, for any district resident only nighttime event. They need to be armed. And I'm going to request one more thing. This is on a very personal nature. Um. On movie nights and Showtime, I'm the last one in that hall. That's a very scary feeling. And I will never do it again. So I would like to have, um, I used him a lot, you know, he comes over and gets me, but after the Atlantic City Boys, there was no one there. And I was terrified.
Well, why were you still there? What were you doing?
I'm the only person, I lock up. I'm not there. I, the entertainment has to go and then I leave. I'm always the last one there. It'd been that hall at night. Especially when you have money in your hand, Mary Lou knows. Same thing with Bingo. You know, I don't think, you know, we don't realize it, that that hall can be really creepy at night when you're the last one there.
Be creepy during the day.
Yeah, if you ever need a buddy. For locking up and stuff, you, you call me and I'll, I'll, I'll be a buddy for it.
I did that same night that the police were here and we had another incident during the day. It's just like, it's just. You think, you know, I walk out and it's like, who's there? And you don't know who's there. I mean, we live in a, it's, it's, this is a strange area, not like how it used to be years ago. And I walked to my golf cart or my car and it's like. I, we need to think about these things. We talk about security all the time, but we don't think about the end of night security.
And I don't, until something happens, which hopefully it never will, are we really going to appreciate the need? I. I think we should throw some money, just an estimate into the budget. For having a security guard here for our Saturday evening and our Showtime evening events.
I, I checked with Manatee County. It's one other thing I was going to bring up. Um, you can hire an off-duty officers. They were pretty vague on how much because it's uh, you know, it depends on who, who you're getting. But thirty-five to like forty-five dollars an hour, to hire off-duty officers to, to be around.
As a uniform?
Yes.
With Bingo, with Bingo, we used to do the buddy system. Um, you go out the backside. And everybody's gone and there's one car left. Well, it's Sandy's and she was doing the cart at that time. She was doing the cart and stuff. And so, and Tim was picking me up with the car. Tim and I would sit there and wait until Sandy started her car and moved. So that, no, she was alone inside the hall. I will get, I will say that, but we always made sure that she was out.
But, but let's say it's you and Tim and Sandy or whoever and somebody comes in that. Are you going to approach that person? I had it last night. I'm sorry. I had it last night. I wasn't going to approach him. I knew he didn't belong there. I knew he was nobody we wanted in this park. I knew the second I looked at him and I was scared to death he was going to try to get into the hall. And when he didn't, that gave me a little sense of relief, but I wasn't going up to that man.
You just wanted his pass.
I, yeah. I, if anybody's missing a white ten-speed bike. It was stashed in the bushes behind the large hall and it went away with a man last night. In a camouflage hooded sweatshirt with something over his face. So you couldn't see his face. At night. When I left Bingo. So whether we want to believe it or not, we are, we are exposed that to those types of things in this park. And we're exposed to them in the evening and we can either choose to do something to protect ourselves. Or wait until something happens and it's too late. I, I, I was not going to approach that man. I just wish we had cameras there. I'd like, we have cameras that, so I can look at that door.
All, all cameras do is show the evidence.
Show the evidence.
Yeah, I know.
So what I'm getting is consensus from the board that they would like to look at a uh, part-time officer, security officer for. The Saturday night, Showtime.
Showtimes and dances.
Bingo. Do, do we want to include Bingo?
I, I think if we have a presence on, on a regular basis every Saturday night or whatever. Maybe the word will get out there. Maybe this isn't an easy target anymore because they have a security guard there sometimes. I don't know. Maybe they'll figure out it's only on Saturdays and choose those other nights of the week. I don't know.
But Todd, if you would, uh, follow up and see just what the.
Yep, I'll, I'll see if I can get that right.
Officers or, and we'll bring that on a PP thirty-eight the next meeting.
Because, you know, seeing it as one thing, having the, being able to do something about it, to actually approach them, nobody's going to want to do that.
I do need to advertise the Showtime for Saturday night. So am I at liberty to tell people, to tell that the fobs will be armed and bring your fobs?
Yes, bring your IDs and bring your fobs.
It's a Showtime, it's a Parktime. Yep.
My mission.
Yep.
The question I have, I'll make it real quick. Is on our hobby club bazaars. If all four doors are locked. All of the hobby club members are vendors at the hobby club bazaar. To get four people. To watch the doors. Will be a real challenge.
It's only.
During, during day.
Daytime event.
It's at nighttime.
During daytime event.
Disable the fobs in the morning. It's the evening.
It's the evening.
Evening more than day.
It's only evening. And so are we telling the instructors at night? Are we getting the word out to beautification club with their big dance? Couple of weeks that the fobs are going to be armed?
We have, we're just now making this decision. So now we have to get the word out, but we haven't made the final.
Not until next meeting.
Poke at it. So we're not, we're continuing as we have been right the second, subject to the next board meeting.
So the fobs will not be armed Saturday night?
Correct.
That's true.
This is a safety issue. Do we have to wait until another board meeting really to put this kind of a change in place? Can we not?
Answer a Showtime.
The Showtime.
It's a Showtime?
It's a Showtime. It's Saturday night.
Ask for them to be, to uh, not be disabled. I mean, you can do that on a per item basis, but we are not blanketly saying. But you have a right to do your event.
Well, there's two things I'm hearing. Um. One, yes, it has come back for the board if we're going to do the uh, armed security or.
Right, that's perfect. That, that'll go for you just to say, no, they are not going to be unlocked or unarmed.
Go right ahead.
I can do that.
Put it on the notices and go right in there.
That's, that's all I want.
I'm sorry.
That's fine. I just.
Then after the next board meeting, we can announce to uh, clubs, groups and organizations. That I'm not going to. Honor a request to disable fobs from dusk on.
Correct.
Correct.
So from dusk on, so even if your event starts at three o'clock in the afternoon, you, the fob disable is going off at dusk.
That's.
But we'll make that formal decision. Okay.
Next board meeting.
Cool.
Um, what happens if we can't finish this up with Zoom because we.
I am going to, we're done. Uh, the only thing we have left is the Blaylock Walters.
All right, let's do it.
Cause we've already done the office assistant and all that. Okay, back on uh, December nineteenth board workshop, um. The board supported sending letters uh, to several different uh, government. Attorneys uh, for special districts. Uh, Mary developed a letter. It was sent out to.
Oh gosh, yeah.
Thirteen to fourteen uh, different uh, special district attorneys. Uh, we got two bids back. One was a no bid and the other one came in from. Harrison. Cohen.
Cohen.
Cohen, Mooney, Fernandez, Jackson, yeah. And when I started researching those and you have the proposal uh, attached to that. Uh, they identified that they are the uh, attorneys for the special districts, um, tri-par as well as holiday park. I called both of those park managers and also the um, chairman of the board. Uh, they highly, highly recommended uh, Andrew Cohen. Uh, they had responses of, uh, they both have his uh, email and text and their telephone. They text him and within a matter of minutes or an hour or two, they get a response back. Uh, that is not what we are getting from our local. Uh, district council and I would like to make the recommendation that we go ahead and award this contract. Issue Blaylock and Walters the sixty-day termination of what the contract was just changed. I think that was at the December. Nineteenth meeting also.
Yeah.
Uh, to go ahead and issue that and move forward with the different uh, attorney that I think will be just a little bit more aggressive and more. Accurate on some of the directions that we are getting.
Can we do that in a workshop?
Um.
Had to bring it back for the.
I, I, I don't want to. I would, I would prefer to get the, what do you call it? Uh. The go ahead, let's start me, let me send a letter to Blaylock, notify these people that the award will be made. And then I'll bring it back to the next.
And well, what you do is you take a straw vote.
Okay.
And you get your approval to, to move forward. And then at the next board meeting, everybody is expected to vote the same way officially that they voted today. To support what you do today.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I have a question first.
Yep.
So their rate is two hundred and eighty dollars an hour. It's not a retainer.
Correct.
So how does that compare? What's, what's our retainer? We, we're paying Black Walters twenty-five hundred a month?
Twenty-five hundred a month.
So we think these guys are going to be able to do. Ten hour.
That would be a negotiated fact. Right now their, their bid price is two hundred and eighty dollars per hour. Um. When I talk to them, we will work out a whole transition schedule to how they're going to come in, sit down with each one of the trustees as well as getting our. Uh. Our actions with Blaylock Walters transferred over because we have several different um.
That was my question. What's going to happen with that?
So in there, once we get the contract established, then we can certainly sit down with uh, Cohen and say, okay, now we'd like to have a. Um.
I think the first year of the contract has to be an hourly rate because they're going to be looking at a lot of information. Um, I'm going to be asking for second opinions on things. And, cause, cause I think I have to, um.
I'm just asking if, do we know it's going to be an increased expense?
Yes.
For a while.
I'm sure it will be.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure it will.
Yes, but I'm, what I'm working on for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget is a, a amount larger than what we've spent historically and I'm hoping that's a. One time, it, then it will go back to something. Once we get. Things straightened out, that'll be a more.
Okay, let me get back there. Straw vote, the vote. Yes, Russell?
Yes, yes.
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 You didn't get Louie?
Yes. Yes.
He, yeah, I got him right.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm a yes, so it's nine to zero. I'll go ahead and proceed with that.
Okay.
Do I need to share my, what I did or no?
You did.
When I called?
The legislator.
I ca, no, I called Andy.
No.
Okay.
No, it's not yet.
All right.
Okay, uh. We'll proceed with that. The last thing I have on the agenda is resident comments.
Oh my goodness.
And we do have one.
In there.
And that, and I'm.
Never, never.
You won the big money last night.
Yeah, she's the one that needed armed security.
First of all, Rod.
Yeah.
Looking at your list of duties.
Got your answer.
Yeah.
Mary Lou McNulty, eighteen oh six Ohio Avenue. We don't see Bingo on your list.
Oh, it's on Kathy's list.
Supposed to be on yours, isn't it?
Well.
When it mushes, we'll see where it comes.
Okay, but immaterial to that, I think it's an excellent idea that just merged together. I think that's excellent. My second thing is I want to compliment Todd. On taking these things off the doors. Every night, Bingo night. Linda and I have to go over and close that door over there and lots of times. We already have come back here and put the stuff away before we realize it's open. Anybody could have walked in.
Exactly.
My fear has always been an animal, that an animal was coming in.
We have a lot of animals that walk in.
Years ago, when I ran Bingo, we had the old doors. I used to come in here before Bingo and make sure these doors were locked and the two back doors were locked. You know, like last night I was by myself, but some, one of the players did stay and wait until I was done. But when I walked out, Linda and I always parked together side by side out there, but I think that's an excellent idea that, that they were gone. I didn't realize it right away last night. But lots of times we come back here and we come back up and it's open. We went, we went all the way back. But lots of times we come back here and we come back up and it's open. We went, we went all the way back there. Anybody could have walked in. I just wanna thank yous for what yous are doing. Good job, guys.
Is that because you won?
I just wanna clarify something that I was asked at the break, and I wanna make sure. We talked about awarding the. Letting the Beautification Club work the kitchen in Bingo, but that can't be official until the next board meeting when we vote it, right? So they can't start doing anything there until after February twentieth.
Correct.
Okay.
And I did spoke with Sandy, and they are agreeable to what we agreed upon. Through this season and then a one-year contract.
Okay, so I think may, might just need to be reminded that that doesn't go into effect until after the twentieth. In case there's some confusion, because I don't know if we made that clear.
Okay, anybody else?
This is Gordon.
Oh.
Okay.
I wanna make a comment on the discussion Rod brought up about the trustee committees.
Yes.
I believe you, if you look at that with your attorney and have him check. That you'll find that it is subject to the sunshine law. As long as they're making recommendations to the trustee or to the full board. I think the exception is only if they're only fact-finding. And as I understood Rod's description, it would have been making recommendations, so I believe you'll find they're under the sunshine law. Sorry to bring that news to you.
That's okay, I'll look into that.
Well, the situation is that if I don't appoint a committee. That I can have a group of people that we can discuss things. And then as there being non-board members. I can put together the PP to bring it back to the board at that time, and that would not be a violation of the sunshine laws.
Well, there was a situation a few years ago where. One trustee was meeting with a group of people and another trustee had a major issue. About that being a sunshine law violation, that you couldn't hold meetings. Without having posted agendas. Notice of meetings and all that good stuff. So it's, it's something that bears checking out, to be sure. Let the attorney.
Great, I, I can do that. That's no problem at all.
Another thing, Rod, to keep track, to keep sure of, is if you've got a bunch of volunteers that you're talking to. You've gotta be careful that if one of them says, well, you know Lori said stop them. Nope, you just became a conduit. Do not let them continue. Alright, and that, but that's true.
Transferring information, which is a violation of the sunshine.
And that's, that's true, whether it's you're in a volunteer meeting or you're just talking with another resident.
I agree, yep.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else on Zoom that would like to make a public comment?
Yes, this is Dottie.
Hi, Dottie.
Hi, long meeting, you guys. Thank you for doing all that. I have sent some emails in lieu of bringing up. Comments during this meeting, just to not make it so long. On the kitchen keys and replacement issue. My question is, has there been consideration to doing a combination lock on the inside door? So that there are those systems out there, I can buy one at Home Depot. That will allow codes to be put in, removed, changed. And you can tell with the wifi who's been in there, if there's a particular time and issue. I would not recommend putting that on the outside door, just the inside door, and make them come in through the inside door to access the kitchen. Just a thought on that. There was a comment made that residents who live in the pet section do not have to register their pet. My question is, why not? All pets should be registered, no matter where they live. There are still restrictions on the types and quantity of pets allowed. The only policy I could find was PP forty, which is the emotional support animal. And I think this issue should be visited as far as requiring them to register their pet. There was discussion about the staffing pattern for the office when it's approved at the next meeting. To increase the staff. You have an office manager who is an exempt position. Let her manage the office staff by doing a staffing schedule. With the approval of their proposed schedule by the chairman of the board until a park manager is hired. This is a legitimate. Job for whoever the office manager is as an exempt person and a manager. And the rest of it you'll receive by email. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the email that I ordered received. Uh, anybody else?
Hi, this is Denise Bolsham.
Hi.
Hi, I just, I wanna compliment you.
What's your address?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, eighteen seventeen Ohio Avenue, Denise Bolsham. I am, you, I wanna compliment you. You are really doing a great job. Anyway. The only thing I noticed was when you talked about the Doc Master, and if you look at the organizational chart. It looks like it's, he's. Or well, the maintenance trustee is appointed by the chairman, and then it says the Doc Master comes under that, but. I would say he looks like he's appointed by, or she looks like they're appointed by the maintenance trustee. I just noticed that. It's no big deal. Anyway, and I might have a few other suggestions, but I think I'll just write them down and send them to you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on Zoom that would like to make resident comment? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the workshop at two forty-four.
Exactly what I have.
Turn off your microphones, please.